Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. We have four action items tonight, including the first two that have public hearings. We're going to start the Transportation and Mobility Plan with a staff presentation by Scott Ogilvy and others.
I think Dylan's bringing the presentation up. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. This is the presentation and public hearing to consider adoption of the Transportation and Mobility Plan, which will become an element of the city's comprehensive plan. If anyone here in the audience or members of the public would like to read the full resolution describing the plan or read the full TNP itself, both those documents are in the Planning and Urban Design section of the city's website. I'm Scott Ogilvy, Program Manager for Complete Streets with the City St. Louis Planning and Urban Design Agency. Before we get into the presentation, I would like to start by acknowledging the city staff team that has been contributing to the plan development as members of the project core team over the last eighteen months, including John Kohler from Board of Public Service, Bethany Williams, Len F them, and Kyle Nelson from the Street Department, David Newberger from the Office on the Disabled, and Grace Keung, former Planning Commission member. Also, our consultant team, led by Jackie Knight from Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly, who's here with us tonight, and including Smith Group, Vector Communications, and CDI. And on a personal note, I would just like to say how fortunate I feel to be working here in PDA while we are tasked with developing the TNP. Is this on? Okay, good. So now the presentation. Background. The last adopted citywide transportation plan for St. Louis was adopted by the City Plan Commission, as this body was then known, in nineteen forty-eight. When adopted, this TNP will functionally reestablish a citywide framework for transportation policy, priorities, and projects. State and local law contemplate and authorize transportation plans as part of municipal comprehensive plans. The slide there is the state law, which details how transportation plans are contemplated in comprehensive plans. And there is the local city code, transportation element designated the general location, character, and extent of existing and proposed streets, boulevards, parkways, rapid transit, et cetera. So this idea is fully embedded in both state and local law that we should have a transportation plan as a municipal government. The slide presentation is going to briefly touch on each chapter in the TNP in order with the goal of an overview of the full topic for the public. I know many Planning Commission members have already dug much deeper into details of the plan than we will likely get into tonight, but both for the Planning Commission and for a summary for the general public. So the first, Chapter One Introduction establishes the purpose, vision, and the foundational themes of the TNP and explains how the plan was developed and how it will be used. And the introduction chapter also serves as a summary of the most important themes, priorities, and goals, in essence, kind of an executive summary of the full plan. "The vision in the TNP is to create a safe, connected, and well-maintained transportation network that enhances quality of life, fosters equitable mobility options, and supports sustainable growth in the city of St. Louis." You guys have seen a version of this slide many times, I know, but just want to reiterate that across these multiple planning efforts, which the Planning Commission is adopting, together, they're building a much more extensive, complete, and contemporary comprehensive plan for our city. And you see there, we've already adopted the SLOUP earlier this year and the Sustainability and Climate Plan last month. And tonight, before us, we'll see how it goes, but perhaps the TNP will be adopted later this evening. The three big themes, based on extensive public engagement and public surveys and staff and departmental engagement, on the slide, safety, connectivity, and maintenance and quality. And there's thirteen goals associated with those themes. And, oh, come on. In the plan introduction, and if you read through these thirteen goals, I think it gives a very clear idea of the reason to have the plan and what we hope to achieve over time by following the plan. So just going to read all thirteen goals quickly. Reduce deaths and serious injuries by fifty percent due to traffic, but fifty percent due to traffic violence by twenty fifty. Improve safety and access for children and those with limited mobility. Design streets for their intended purpose. Curb reckless driving and create efficiencies for people traveling through modernized technologies. Connectivity goals. Prioritize the ADA Transition Plan implementation. Focus on accessible connections for all St. Louis residents. Proactively build and maintain a continuous and accessible sidewalk network across St. Louis. Continue to expand the cycling and greenway network to safely connect destinations across St. Louis. Continue to support the delivery and expansion of quality transit and other mobility services. Reduce or mitigate existing infrastructure barriers and avoid creating new barriers. And the maintenance and quality goals. Implement asset management for more proactive decision-making about transportation infrastructure. Put major roadways on a repaving schedule or an investment schedule and allocate citywide capital to this activity each year. Define the parameters for durable pavement markings and other better quality roadway features. Improve pavement and sidewalk restoration standards after utility and development work. Chapter Two, Engagement Summary summarizes community engagement process, outreach methods, and how public input shaped the TNP. You guys have seen this before, but just to reiterate, we did community surveys and a statistically valid survey, did a number of workshops with city staff and partner agencies. We did neighborhood tours through various modes of transportation, walking, bike, and bus tours for different sort of working or interest groups engaged with the planning effort. We had a community advisory committee, who you're going to hear from a little bit in the next slides. Thank you, Stan, for your service there. Community pop-ups, online news media interviews, number of open houses. We had a number of coordination meetings with the Universal Design Group, which David Newberger leads and is a consistent touchpoint for the city to engage with people with different types of disabilities. There were nearly four thousand resident interactions throughout the course of the project over a year and a half, and there are about seventy-five hundred project website visits. This is the video section. There's actually two videos, so this is intermission. Those were community advisory committee members, Marshall Nelson, Stephanie Ko, Zandi Barrett, Danielle Donfro, Emily Atrebus, Angela Stammerjohn, Dan Doling, and Melvin Latham. They were, we used the community advisory committee to really check in on the plan development to kind of workshop some key themes and to get insight into how residents were receiving the plan. So I just want to thank them for their willingness to participate in the CAC and their willingness to go on video and say a few words about it. Chapter Three is the Safety Action Plan. This chapter presents a comprehensive framework for reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries aligned with national best practices. Safety Action Plan is a highly data-driven assessment of where the most acute safety issues are in St. Louis. It is a prioritization of where investment can pay the biggest safety dividends, and it's a menu of strategies which together can improve safety outcomes. This is the first time St. Louis is making this type of formal commitment to reducing serious injuries and fatalities. As you can see on the slide, the Safety Action Plan is a variety of things. It's the data assessment and the mapping of where we have the most acute issues. It's a series of strategies that can help us address those issues. Some of them are design strategies, some of them are education strategies, some of them are enforcement strategies. It's at least a near-term priority of where investments can pay the biggest dividends. And it's some internal assessment, I think, of how the city can deliver the whole suite of services that will produce the best safety outcomes. This is kind of the background information to why a city needs a Safety Action Plan. As you can see on the right, this is where we find ourselves in twenty twenty-five nationally after decades where traffic fatalities were generally on a steady decline nationwide. There's been a very pronounced increase in fatalities in the last decade, particularly for pedestrians. And we see some similar data out of the St. Louis region. So really, all aspects of the Transportation and Mobility Plan should be viewed through a safety line. So this chapter, it's not the only section of the plan which is engaged with improving safety. The more completely that all recommendations in the plan are acted on, the better we can expect safety outcomes to be. One thing that the community engagement in this plan really highlighted for all of us working on the plan is how many St. Louis residents have had their own lives significantly impacted by traffic crashes. It might be something that directly affected them, or it might have affected a family member or another loved one. And so beyond these fatality statistics, there are many, many St. Louis residents enduring lifelong impacts related to the injuries, the personal or financial consequences of a serious crash. Jackie Knight is going to, from CMT, is going to discuss the next two chapters, Chapters Four and Five, and then I'll come back to close this out. Jackie?
Thanks, Scott, and good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here tonight to talk about the TNP. As Scott mentioned, I have been the project manager on this planning effort from CMT, and it's been truly an honor to work on this, and I'm excited to be here tonight. So Chapter Four is our street design framework that introduces a new context-sensitive way that we can design streets in the city of St. Louis that meet the vision of a safer, more connected city. This is the first time that St. Louis is putting forward a street design framework like this. However, this is not a new trend. Other cities are adopting similar-type design guidelines, and so it's really exciting to see this reflected in the TNP as a new approach to how streets are going to be designed in St. Louis. So like Scott mentioned, one of the goals of the TNP is designing streets for their intended purpose, and that is really a large portion of what is included in Chapter Four in the Street Design Framework. It sets forward a goal of designing streets to meet the mobility needs of all users and also focusing on all modes of transportation for people walking, biking, taking public transit, and driving their car. It also focuses on prioritizing safety and providing strategies that provide safer connections for people moving around the city. And it also focuses on the maintenance and quality for long-term durability and impacts for the city of St. Louis. And then finally, finally, another component is focusing on adjacent land uses. So this moves beyond looking at functional classification, which is traditionally how streets have been designed and really thinks a more context-sensitive approach to designing streets in the public right-of-way that takes into account private adjacent land uses. So this is an example spread of some of the design strategies. So we're going to get into some of the details that are included in Chapter Four of the Street Design Framework. But within all of the elements, so the slide, the spread on the slide, excuse me, is on bicycle enhancements. And there's a lot of tools related to design strategies for bicycle enhancements, pedestrian enhancements, transit enhancements, and that's all included in the Street Design Framework so that as the projects are being scoped, or even as other consultants potentially are working on projects in the future, this can really serve as a manual of what some of those design strategies are that are then cross-referenced later in the chapter when we're looking at specific tools for implementation on specific street types. The other key component of the Street Design Framework is the sixteen street typologies. So this is a matrix of street types that's based on roadway functional classification and moving cars throughout a transportation network, which streets still need to be able to do. But then the other row of the matrix is again what those adjacent land uses are. And so those adjacent land uses really help influence what the design of that street is based on what the business needs are, what the local resident needs are, where people are coming from and going to, and just what general street activity and street life is on those streets. Also included within the Street Design Framework are the design parameters. There's a spread for each street type. There's categories for different types of street improvements. And then there's a complete matrix of what should be considered on those streets from recommended to not applicable. So it's a very clear roadmap of what should be considered on streets when projects are being scoped and delivered across the city. Every single street in the city of St. Louis has been mapped on the street typology map, and I can assure you, a lot of work went into making sure that we got those street types right from our initial first pass to in-the-field investigations to aerial reviews, a lot of coordination with the Strategic Land Use Plan Team when they were still working on that project as well. In addition to the Street Design Framework and the street type, we have also developed a series of modal overlays, and those are additional maps that can help make decisions on what transportation mode should be prioritized when you're looking at a specific street. We've developed a future bike network. Again, a lot of work went into this, thinking about where those bike connections are and better connectivity to greenways, really focusing on that connectivity goal that can lay out prioritizations for where we're building bike facilities. There's a transit emphasis network. We coordinated closely with Metro Transit on where some of their high ridership routes are and where they're likely to invest resources into transit amenities. We looked at park access streets. Because we have so many great parks in the city of St. Louis, sometimes our roads can be barriers to those parks, so those streets might need specific tools to get people to parks, specifically when we're thinking about children. Children come out very clearly in the TNP. We also looked at potential road diet candidates. Some of our streets in St. Louis are overbuilt for what our current traffic capacity or what our current traffic volumes are and even forecasting future volumes. We know there are some locations where we could really right-size the street and maybe prioritize other modes of transportation. And then we also looked at calm streets, again with that focus on moving people of all ages and abilities seamlessly between community assets and destinations, parks, schools. Residential locations really played a big, important factor in where we developed this calm streets map. All of these maps are located in this chapter as well. Okay. So in addition to the matrix, or in addition to the street typology map, each street type has a spread, like what you see on the slide. There is an illustrative rendering of what that street could look like based on what typical right-of-way widths are for that street type in the city. There's a discussion about what each zone of the street is, from the roadway zone to the amenity zone to the sidewalk zone, and what recommended widths for those zones are. And then you can see there's a color-coded matrix of different street elements by what the category is and what should be recommended on that street. This is going to be a very important tool moving forward for the city of St. Louis because previously, as projects were being scoped, or as projects were even sometimes in the design phase, there wasn't maybe as clear of a roadmap of what some of these design strategies were. And it was really coming out, you know, in a planning process or an engagement process, which will, you know, still play an important tool. But this is a clearly defined roadmap that is largely based on input that we received from the public through all of the engagement efforts that Scott mentioned, but also through a lot of workshops that we did with city staff, who are ultimately going to be charged with delivering projects in alignment with the TNP. But it's also important to note that it is a living document, and it can evolve over time, and it's largely meant to guide capital planning and design. So Chapter Five moves from the Street Design Framework, and it focuses on a connectivity and mobility framework. Again, really thinking about that connectivity for people moving across all of St. Louis, and it outlines specific strategies for improving that multimodal integration within our transportation network, a focus on accessibility and implementation of the ADA Transition Plan, but then also regional collaboration. Another thing that we know about St. Louis city is, you know, people are coming here from all over the region. People from here are going all over places in St. Louis region, and so we really wanted to focus on that regional collaboration here within this chapter. So what this chapter does is it focuses on where transportation services can ensure that residents without access to a car have more transportation choices. The map that's on the slide here today shows zero car households, and this map can really help identify where we need to be prioritizing transportation services to provide residents in St. Louis that do not have access to a car, that might have trouble accessing goods and services, where we need to be prioritizing some of those decisions. Another thing that we have not focused on holistically before is curb management. And curbs in urban settings specifically are some of the most valuable real estate we have. And so we really need to be focusing on what is the highest and best use of the curb, and what are some of those curb management strategies to ensure that people can make those passenger rides, or even thinking about delivery services, especially in urban settings where you have a lot of competing needs for the curb. And then again, the regional collaboration. There's discussion in this chapter about strengthening partnerships with other agencies and ensuring that people can still have seamless connections across jurisdictional boundaries. During the Transportation Mobility Plan, Metro Transit was a key stakeholder in the process. We coordinated closely with MoDOT. East West Gateway participated in our workshops. And Great Rivers Greenway was another key partner because we know the Greenway Network in the city of St. Louis is expanding, and that's an area that we also discuss in the connectivity and mobility framework. And then Scott's going to finish it out.
Thank you, Jackie. Chapter Six, Policy and Ordinance Recommendations or Revisions. This chapter recommends updates to city policies and ordinance is to institutionalize and operationalize best practices and support TNP goals. How did we develop these policy and ordinance revisions? So we looked at peer practices in other relatively similar cities across the United States. We dug into a number of topics, including the capital process, asset management, existing programs that the city runs, traffic safety, development requirements, and staffing best practices with a little bit of an extra look into things that should be emphasized as the city transitions into a Department of Transportation model in a few years. The key recommendations are to shift to a more programmatic citywide approach for arterial maintenance and sidewalk repair, including a new major street program, which I'll talk a little bit more about in the next slide. Adjusting our safety emphasis to really put safety first across decision-making, reform the capital budgeting system, and invest adequately and consistently in our infrastructure. There's another section, and part of the TNP process is developing these tools, but developing online and GIS tools for data sharing, public dashboards. These things can also just facilitate community engagement and just keep the public up to speed on projects and initiatives that the city is engaged with. I'm going to touch on a few key policy recommendations. There are more in the full document, but these are the most interesting and exciting. And actually, all of these had, I'll say they had a lot in the public comment period over the last thirty days. Quite a few of the comments were focused on these programs, and were very supportive. The comments were basically saying, thumbs up, I would love to see those implemented. So first is, and also want to emphasize, there could be tension around these as well. And so moving in the direction of these policies may be difficult, but they're also extremely important for meeting the TNP goals, and in particular, the safety goals. So first is reform and update to the capital planning process, focus on an asset management approach, transportation assets in a more routine maintenance and investment cycle. Instituting what in the document is called a Major Streets Program for routine investment in major and arterial streets across St. Louis. Just to go into that a little bit further, as everybody here knows, one of the main capital inputs in the city process is the Ward Capital Program. The TNP discusses how the Ward Capital Program is not a very good fit for improvements to arterial and major streets, which span wards and require more investment than is really possible through the Ward Capital Program. So the concept here, and this is a concept that is a pretty common DOT concept and is practiced in other cities as well, is that the major streets really become their own category that are driven by citywide capital investment and citywide planning. And then there's another category below that that's a more appropriate bucket for ward capital expenditures. But that will be a significant transition that will really require some decision-making down the road from, I think, elected and departmental leadership. The next policy is to sunset, so the term sunset is important here, not end tomorrow, but sunset the fifty-fifty sidewalk program and supplement that, establish a new block-by-block sidewalk program that will improve ADA access and sidewalk consistency eventually across the entire city so that we have across the entire city so that we have more consistent expectations of how sidewalks are built and maintained across the city. There are other policy recommendations as well, including improving project and information sharing and establishing more resident-facing or public-facing guidance and review. I put this one in here because the Planning Commission sees these. Review criteria for street and right-of-way vacations. Chapter Seven, the Implementation Plan provides a roadmap for moving from vision to action, including funding, performance metrics, and annual reporting. I wanted to highlight that many recommendations in the TMP will require policy, budgeting, capital planning, or ordinance updates from city leadership to fully realize the recommendations that are contained in the TMP. Other recommendations can be achieved with internal department-led, just policy or practice updates going forward. There's a funding strategy and plan implementation, which does dig into some local funding ideas, but also covers, you know, local, state, federal, and private sources. The goal is to pursue predictable, consistent capital allocations each year, which allow for a consistent planning approach, particularly for major roadways. There is some guidance on performance metrics and tracking and publishing information on safety investments and safety data in the future. And we're, of course, doing these things now, but there's an emphasis on, you know, continuing to strengthen partnerships and internal partnerships with peer agencies, partner agencies, and internal coordination, just to keep the projects moving. This is not in the TMP, but I wanted to spend a few slides talking about what I will call map maintenance and updates. This is in the resolution. So there are, TMP has a lot of maps. Many of those maps are quite detailed. We anticipate or we expect after the plan is adopted, a lot of these maps are going to go online into an interactive GIS format where it'll be easier to, you know, zoom in and look at the detail. A map like the Street Design Framework assigns a category to thousands and thousands of individual street segments. So how do we keep that content and those maps fresh and current over time without bogging down the Planning Commission with every change that might be desired? Well, the city code contemplates just such a situation and gives the Planning Commission authority to delegate smaller decisions to various city staff, including the Planning Director, PDA staff, or the Board of Public Service staff. The Planning Commission has, in the past, already delegated authority on some topics, such as smaller area redevelopment plans and right-of-way vacations. So with the resolution, the proposal is to delegate authority for map changes to PDA staff and for staff to provide an annual report or memo of map changes that just details the map changes and the justification for the map changes. I want to draw a distinction between changes to the Sloop map or to the zoning map because those changes could potentially affect property rights. And so those changes always go before the Planning Commission for public review. And these changes to the maps in the TMP, which are more focused on planning-level guidance, particularly for city departments, public agencies, but also public-facing planning guidance. So consistent with the authority contained in Chapter 3.48.070, the memo proposes and the resolution proposes that the Planning Commission delegate authority to planning department staff to make changes to the maps depicted in the slide with an annual update to the Planning Commission. In early October, we started the 30-day, 30 days is actually more than is legally required, but 30-day public comment period on the draft plan. The draft plan was published online in the city website and the TMP project website. Comment forms are available in both those places, as well as in person in a few locations by email or over the phone. Comments are received mostly through the online comment form, but also by email, phone, and via the Planning Commission work session. Thank you for those who were able to attend. And the comments, responses, and proposed changes are summarized in Exhibit B of the resolution. And we sent out a slightly updated version of Exhibit B. Was it yesterday, Miriam? And so that, that update actually captured some of the things from the work session that had not, were not in the table in the first version we sent out. That is the conclusion of the staff presentation. Thank you.
Scott injure, it's a great presentation, good summary of the, of the plan. So next, we're gonna move into the public open, sorry, the public hearing. And so anyone who's online that would like to speak during the public hearing, please enter your name in the chat. And likewise, if you're here in the room and you'd like to speak, please enter your name on the list over at the desk if you haven't done so. Okay, great, excellent. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
I moved. I moved. Jay. Stan moved and Alderwoman Sonnier seconded.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Alderman Cone is here. Alderwoman Schweitzer is on maternity leave. Aye.
Aye, okay. Alderwoman Sonnier.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmandia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudman.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Chair Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll just make note that Alderwoman Schweitzer is on leave and Shane Cone is substituting for her as a delegation he's authorized to do.
All right, I'm going to start with the list of the people who've signed up in the room. We realize there could be some confusion on which section you have signed up to speak since we have two public hearings tonight. So I'll go ahead and say the names, and if you'd like to speak on the second issue, just indicate that. And forgive me for my pronunciation. All right. Ah, that's the first one. Were you here to speak on the, on the transportation plan or the?
Actually, having heard that, it's probably gonna be a combination, but mostly for the second.
Okay, any comments you'd like to make on the Transportation Mobility Plan, well, except now?
Serendipitously, one of the, this particular program was a very contentious part of the meeting at St. Ambrose last week regarding the development, McBride Development on Wilson on the Hill, where people are very concerned about the public safety and vehicle transportation exiting on Wilson to Hampton. We've asked, Alderman Devote has indicated that he has asked for a traffic study there and was told that there was no reason to have a traffic study there because there was no residence, no residential development aside from what is normally there. Now, those are his words to me, I'm asking. So thank you for bringing this up tonight. Thank all of you for bringing this up tonight because we do not want to have a situation that we pray for often, for the young man that was killed outside of Tad Drews, who is a member of our parish. We don't want to see that sort of a situation occur on the Hill with what we are fearful of having such a significant influx of traffic on Wilson Avenue exiting onto Hampton. And conversely, the other exits as well. So thank you for this presentation tonight. I can tell you that there's, on the Hill, there's many people applauding this. So thank you, that's my part of that.
Next is Robert Sforza. No, next one, okay. Andrea. The second one as well, thank you. And Dr. Francis. And please correct my pronunciation of your name.
My name is Dr. Francis Alukwe. I'm just new to this and so probably I signed my name in the wrong place. But my organization, our organization, Good Neighbor Partnership and Collaboration, we have sent a plan here and we are waiting to see whether it will be included in the agenda to present it. We represent Hamilton Heights, Wells Goodfellow, and Kingsway West. And we've been doing planning for the past three years. And wanted to know whether we can be considered to make presentation and whether our plan can be supported along the Martin Luther King Drive and that area so we can see what we can do to improve in the area. So that's why I just, I don't know whether there's the forum to do that or some other forum to do that.
I assume that relates to one of the neighborhood plans? Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. I am Jonathan Roper, City Planning Executive, the Planning and Urban Design Agency. So Good Neighbor Partnership have been, excuse me, they've been on Dr. Martin Luther King and their community efforts does predate our neighborhood planning. They have had meetings, several meetings, different, about each month or so, with different community members. And they were outside of our neighborhood planning, Plan STL program, trying to create a plan just because with absent of Plan STL and planning, neighborhoods are doing that on their own. So they have accumulated a document that they, I would say on Plan STL, neighborhood planning side, we would absorb that into the planning process. And also, but there's, their document as they have it, they're looking to also have the Planning Commission, well, acknowledge that and that's, that's just.
So then he would work with you on getting that to a stage to be brought to the Planning Commission?
Well, what the Planning Commission would see from the Planning and Urban Design Agency would be the Plan STL, the Plan Area Four Plan, which does include Wells Goodfellow, Hamilton Heights, Kingsway West, along with Fairground Neighborhood, College Hill, Penrose, and O'Fallon. So part of that effort, and as we do neighborhood planning, we take into consideration the items that the Planning Commission has approved before, any redevelopment plans, rezonings. We talk about the different focus areas that neighborhoods like to see. There have been a number of plans that communities have presented or projects that they would like to see going. So we absorb that, we work and build on that. And then, just like Transportation Mobility Plan or the Sloop, we present that at a public hearing, adopt that plan, and then we work, continue to work with other departments. So at this phase in this process, we are just launching neighborhood planning. We are having, we're actually gonna come out with our neighborhood planning committee tomorrow. And we are going to have a more call for more of the vision, projects, initiatives that different neighborhoods have. So at this point, we have received that document about two weeks ago. And so we are going to include that into the neighborhood planning process. But, but I'll just note, if there's a separate request that is wanting to be made, that's why I want to make that distinction.
So we really appreciate what the city is doing and we thank you for all the efforts. And we also want to acknowledge that a group of us who own businesses along Martin Luther King Drive, and some of you have been in that area, you see how dilapidated and how neglected that area is. We have a behavioral health outpatient clinic and we have psychiatrists, nurse practitioners, internal medicine physicians, and so forth. But even though we'll be, we'll maintain presence in the area and we have reduced the amount of, you know, people dying from overdose and things like that, but it's still very difficult for so many people to come in that area. So what we did then over the past three years have been to organize ourselves. We organized the for-profit companies, the nonprofit companies, residents, renters, and others. And we have been meeting over a period of three years, putting plans together. In other words, we were not waiting for the city. We were kind of doing things on our own to see how we transform the area. And the area is beginning to come back now because people see our employees pack their cars and so forth. And people are no longer rushing past, you know, because someone is gonna shoot you or something like that. So they see people like us walk out of the office, they kind of slow down a little bit. So we're asking that the investment of time and efforts and resources we've committed to developing our plan, if you can give us approval, at least the seal of approval that will allow us to do some fundraising. Right now, we are trying to feel the position of the Assistant Director and a number of other positions. And that can help us to start looking at some of the things that are happening within that area, Hamilton Heights, Wells Goodfellow, Kingsway West. In the past one week, about eight buildings have been burnt because a lot of the homeless folks, for those of you who are familiar with the area, who are at Horderment there. Now, it is very, getting cold, so they get into a building and they put on some little, you know, light to keep warm. Eventually, there is fire. Even this afternoon, you'll be hearing the firefighters running all over the place. So if we have an approval and there is this seal of, you know, support from the Planning Commission, where we go to look for resources to hire individuals that can be paid to at least do some basic preliminary things like boarding up those buildings and getting some places where we can move the, you know, the homeless folks who are in the cold, get them out. And it's a very tough situation that, in our area there. So any help we can get that can help us to start doing a few things, like getting, you know, reducing the amount, the number of buildings that are burnt and getting some folks out of the, the cold. So preliminary approval is good. And then we've been working with Jonathan and he has been very, very helpful. He has attended our meetings from time to time since, for the past two, three years. And when he comes, he brings some materials. So the plan we developed was structured in line with your minimum standard of approval requirement. And then we also integrated the Plan STL. So while we will appreciate you giving us some approval for us to start doing something, we'll still continue to work with him towards the, the current city plan that will become effective to 2027. So between now and 2027, we can be doing something. If you guys give us an approval to, you know, start doing something, at least to conserve some of the assets. Some of the buildings that are being burnt now are buildings that will still be needed to support the area. For example, we've also started conversations with Missouri Main Street. So, and whatever you can do to help us, then we ourselves can be contributing to stabilizing the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments and for being here and the work you've done in the neighborhood as well. I'd say work with Jonathan going forward and we'd look forward to seeing your plan presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have some.
Sorry. I was about to sign up.
Oh, okay.
Mind if I give a quick?
Please, go right in. Just state your name first, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairwoman and members of the Commission. My name is Eric Kelmehr. I'm the Community Planning Manager at Trailnet. We are a nonprofit that has worked for over 35 years to make walking, biking, and public transit safer and more accessible to everyone in the St. Louis region. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Trailnet to say that we strongly support the adoption of this Transportation and Mobility Plan with its clear emphasis on safety and improving human-scale connectivity, particularly through a more robust system of Particularly through a more robust system of high-quality sidewalks, greenways, bike paths and public transit services. We feel this plan represents a long overdue comprehensive vision for improving how our city moves safely. Equitably and sustainably, and I would add healthfully as well. And in addition to the emphasis that has been placed on safety and connectivity, we really want to commend. The extensive community engagement efforts and the outreach to key stakeholders that went into producing this plan. And on the guidance specifically laid out in the plan to update the city's standards and practices to align with evidence-based best practices. Trailnet has long championed changes in St. Louis to promote a safer, healthier and more equitable transportation and mobility system. Throughout St. Louis and beyond, and we strongly believe that this plan moves our city forward in that right direction. We look forward to working with the city and its residents in implementing the strategies and guidelines that this plan establishes. So. Thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you. Suzanne, would you speak next? And just go ahead and introduce yourself when you begin. Suzanne? We're ready for your comments. Oh, there she is. Great. We can't hear you right now, but please Suzanne, go ahead and introduce yourself and make your comments. Well, we cannot hear any comments. Do you, would you like to write your comments into the, into the chat? Because we are, we're just not hearing you at all. Is there anyone else that, that wanted to speak while we're trying to figure out the technical, have you, have you chatted with her back and indicated? Okay. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. We're just having technical difficulties. So thank you for attempting to speak and I. May I apologize for any difficulties on our end.
Second person.
Thank you. All right, with that, you can go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. Previous role.
Objections to previous role? There are no objections? The public hearing is closed. Right now we're ready for Commissioner questions. Let's just go ahead and start at the end of the table and work our way through.
Okay. All right. That was a surprise. Nonetheless, I'm ready. So I, I attended the meeting we had with Scott and his team. I guess that was last week. So, and I was pretty impressed with what we had, but I have a couple of questions that. Commissioner Bradley can probably answer that I asked Scott at the meeting. So we have this street network and we have this planning process that's beautifully laid out. How does our relationship change with? Street work in the, in the world of the city? How do we, what difference does it make in your life and the life of our departments? Because I think it's beautifully laid out, the community has been engaged. How does it rubber hit the road?
I mean, I think for, for me, the, the issue is going to be funding available. I mean, obviously we've got a great plan that's in place. But the question always is how much capital funding is available? And so I think when they talk about, you know, revising ordinances and how that gets programmed. And how capital gets spent is going to assist in that mission. It's going to be slow to start. It's going to take a lot of collaboration and partnership. Through the Planning Urban Design Division, through BPS, Street Department. And through everybody who works in the public right of way. I mean, it's also going to be a learning curve for the people, for the aldermen, for people who do business with us today. But I would say for all the reasons that this study has come up with, we need to move towards this, you know. As the gentleman stated before, you know, people aren't slowing down. Things are, you know, going awry. And so the only thing that we can do. Is to address it with the infrastructure we have and to enforce it with, with our police. And everything can't be infrastructure and everything can't be enforcement. So then it becomes this educational aspect and learning curve from everybody. But. I think that's how it works for me is, you know, having the laws in place, the support, the funding. And then we, we roll into this program, we start slow and we continue to go. And just like everything else in St. Louis. Once you get there, nobody ever remembers what you did before. So that's, that's how I look at it.
Okay, thank you. So, and I had a question. You made a change. On Natural Bridge between Fair and Grand? Wasn't there a change in the street designation?
Yeah, from, correct. Yeah. That, that came up, we were looking at, and I don't know the, I don't recall the plan area, but Jonathan could help me. We were looking at one of the, the. Drafts, neighborhood plans and there were some comments from Commissioner Williams particularly actually. About the variety of comments on several street designations. So we looked through those. And the natural, natural bridge, I think was miscategorized in the current map. I think there's a data reason for that primarily because. Sometimes the way the daily traffic is mapped in GIS maps, it gets split. Into two streets when there's a significant median. And so it was artificially low in that segment, which I think pushed it. Into a different category, but it should be, I think it's. It's, it's one of the arterial categories is the category it should be in. So that's one of the suggested changes.
Well, one thing, you mentioned the partnership with MODOT and my big comment to you was about MSD. That we have significant amount of MSD infrastructure below every street. And we really should. Be more partnered in our planning with MSD for our street infrastructure. I mean, they're, they're at a critical juncture, just like we are, where they've got to invest major money in the next ten years in the street infrastructure. The sewer infrastructure and that affects our streets. And when we have flooding, it deteriorates our streets faster. It's a cost to the city and the citizens. That when we have street flooding or water sitting on the street, frozen like we had some years. We just need to have a partnership where we're really holding each other accountable. And I don't know that we're necessarily doing that. I'm sure on their side of the ledger, there are things we should be doing. That we don't do. But I think for the, you know, as we go forward in the planning process, we need to look at that. The last thing I had was on MODOT's cooperation. Natural Bridge, that section you were just talking about, we spent a lot of money in the last three or four years. With that median infrastructure, we built no curb. On the citizen side where you have single family, multifamily. If we have that project to do again, and I saw curb management was one of the issues. Why would we spend that much money on the street and not, I mean, no curb? And it's what the gentleman was talking about speeding with no curb, cars are hit and knocked up on the sidewalk, people park on the sidewalk. So it enhances that and we have this huge median. So our planning process there with MODOT. I mean, yes, if they're taking care of the street, they should have the curb.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not going to think they're going to agree to that, but. That should be the city's position. If you're maintaining the street, you maintain the curb.
At the, at the risk of going down a rabbit hole. MODOT, really the Missouri State Highway Commission and the city of St. Louis have an agreement for street maintenance of seven surface streets. That the city owns the right of way in the street, but MODOT has agreed to maintain them. And the way most of those, that agreement, it's most recent kind of significant update is from. Two thousand and four, although there's been some little tweaks besides that since. But it generally says curb to curb. And so that excludes sidewalks. What MODOT sort of agreed to maintain was like the driving surface essentially. I think if we were. We as a city would probably prefer to be the full right of way, the full sidewalk, you know, everything in the right of way. To do that would require the Missouri State Highway Commission to change that agreement, which I think is always. There's some risk involved when you, you know, crack open an agreement like that, that it might. Get worse rather than better with, you know, the state of Missouri potentially. I also think if we were to. Today, you know, since that project, I think the city has worked. To forge a stronger partnership with MODOT where there's a lot more communication. And I think MODOT has reformed some of their public engagement processes too. And I think there would be. At a minimum, I think there would be more opportunity today if they were starting the planning process for the city. To kind of co-plan that project with them and potentially. Bring some funding to the, to the table that might have changed some of those design decisions that MODOT made through that project.
General comment, lots changed since nineteen forty-eight. And I think this approach, that was pretty comprehensive for its day. This includes things like accountability, equity, durability in terms of maintenance and such. It's a much more balanced approach in terms of community and multimodalism and. Roadways as a part of a community. So I laud you for, for the approach and the document. I only have one question, the dedicated bucket of money for major streets. What's the level of support or excitement for that at City Hall? I know the budgeting process in the city is. Maybe not unique, but definitely complicated. I didn't know. You know, what the response is or the level, you know, is that embraced or not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I am in a position to speak directly to like the level of support. I, I did, I think that the. I think the role of the plan was to make the case that if that policy change is made. It will pay significant dividends over time in terms of predictable equitable maintenance across the city, addressing safety issues. And there's some suggestions in the document for how to fund that. But it doesn't, the document doesn't say it, you should fund it with A and not B. It, it leaves some space for the political process to work through those things. And so. You know, I, obviously I'm hopeful that that conversation picks up post-plan adoption, but I, it, it could take. Some time to fully implement that because I, I did want to. Highlight that it is a pretty significant change to the current practice.
Right. Last comment, I think this is great timing. Way the industry has come up in terms of planning in general. MODOT is much more amenable to urban. Sensitive design than they were, say, just a few years ago. And with the coming Department of Transportation for the city, I think this will help inform that as well. So good work.
I have any questions? Just wanted to state like. At the very early stages of this, I was part of the CAC, joined that thinking I'd be advocating only for multimodal modes of transportation, bike, more bike paths. Stuff like that. And then throughout that process, learned a lot more about what this TNP would do. And I came out being really happy with things like the sunsetting of the fifty-fifty sidewalk program. Which I'm really kind of excited about, coming more with a more strategic approach of replacing sidewalks. There's so many things, excuse me, there's so many things that are also. Talked about in this plan that are just great moves for the city. So I'm just excited to hopefully adopt this plan today. Thanks guys for the hard work and I appreciate you guys.
No questions either. I'm just excited about this and as a member of the commission and as a resident of the city, I think it's just fantastic to see. This plan, the sloop, zoning upgrades, sustainability and climate plan, all these things coming together in such a short amount of time right now. Seems like the Planning and Urban Design Agency really knows what it's doing and moving in a really cool direction. So I'm excited to be here and see that.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions for me. The conversation of curb to curb brought up a thought. So I'm curious on these major road projects. It seems like most of our roadway projects now are generally just resurfacing and maybe some sidewalk repair at key intersections. But, you know, to implement some of these major changes that we're talking about, it seems that that would have to include. Almost the entire right of way. So is that the intent is moving forward, some of these projects, especially on major arterials would be. Entire right of way and include street sidewalk curb improvements?
Yeah, I think it has to be on a case by case basis determined by, you know, available funding and project scope. I, you know, right now we have kind of the full spectrum of those types of projects going. We have complete right of way reconstruction projects. We have, you know, I, I kind of refer to the ARPA projects as maybe kind of the happy medium for a lot of these things where you're making. A meaningful. Investment in a full corridor, but it's not reconstruction. You are kind of working with the infrastructure. Because there's a huge delta on a cost per mile basis between that type of project, which is, you know, it's resurfacing, safety improvements and sidewalk improvements. And completely reconstructing the right of way. It's like five, ten, fifteen times it's expensive to do those really significant projects. So we have to be selective. And I think the plan provides some direction as to where the really significant investment should be. And where maybe the more like programmatic investments should be.
So would that include, you had mentioned for the corridors that are maintained by MODOT, you know, as a way to potentially. City partner with them on some of these improvements. Are those routes included, would be included in sort of these major. Streets category where as a MODOT projects comes along, it's also on the city's list to do and therefore there could be a partnership on that project?
Yeah, I think that's exactly the type of model that the plan is pointing towards. All of those MODOT routes are on that major streets map. And MODOT is pretty, you know, MODOT plans ahead a number of years. And if we can get on that type of. You know, routine cycle of investment essentially, that'll make it much easier for the city to, to kind of pair up. The funding at the right time to expand the scope of MODOT projects, which in, you know. Commissioner Miller's example, I think. If we'd had this approach a decade ago, we probably would have done something a little different on Natural Bridge.
Last question, just curiosity wise, do you anticipate that this, the adoption of this plan would help the city in its application for federal grants at all? Or any other funding from other sources?
Federal grants a little bit, but honestly, we're pretty competitive overall in, when we're seeking grants. I think we could potentially. We've been doing very well in recent years maximizing funding, but I think. Over the longer period, there's been some maybe off years. And I think if you have a more citywide capital approach to that, you can try to maximize the funding every year. I think there are some opportunities with partner agencies, I think particularly MODOT, where if we're expressing. This is like the local municipal desire. As an agency, they're a little bit, and, and we've written that down, you know, in a plan document. They're a little bit more willing, I think, to bring more resources to the table. And I think it's part of the purpose of the plan to make the case that. Over the long period, not, not so much the last. over the long period, not, not so much the last few years, but over the long period, haven't really been investing a sufficient amount to maintain the system we have. And, you know, streets, transportation assets are, it's really one of the most important responsibilities for local government. So the plan is making a case to, to invest at the level that maintains what we have.
No questions, just a couple of general comments. So this has been a long time in the making. And when this idea first came up, I remember the look on Scott's face when he was named to be the project manager. And I can tell you, this is a tremendous amount of work that was completed. To Scott and Jackie Knight, Crawford, Murphy, Tilly, I believe you guys did just an outstanding job. You, you know, looked at every angle of this thing, you considered all the variables, you know. Obviously we need to find funding to make this happen. But before where we had a city where you didn't know driving from one street to the other and one neighborhood to the other, this is standardized. This helps with safety, this helps with expectations of, of the public and, and all the people on the government side. So I applaud you for that and congratulate you guys on the job well done. And just want to say I totally support this plan. Thank you.
Thanks. No comment, thank you.
I just wanted to start by just thanking you and everyone else who had a role on developing the plan and putting this together. I am very excited, cautiously excited, obviously. But I think just, it should really be highlighted that this is really the first serious effort in at least 50 years to really do this type of proactive, you know, planning and, and work. And I think one of the frustrations that I hear all the time in regards to our city from city leaders and residents across the board is just a feeling that we're always being very reactive and there's not much proactiveness. And so I really like this plan because I think that it presents a lot of proactive measures. I'm a fan of a lot within the plan, so it's hard for me to kind of break out like what I specifically like. But I, you know, I do think it's just important to talk about the strength in land use and relation, and transportation relationships that are presented in this plan. I really like that the protected bike lanes and the brick line greenways and just really thinking interconnectedly about these different things in our city is a strong positive. I also really like just the equity-driven database maps that are included and would encourage anyone who's watching to just kind of take a look at that plan. I have like just a couple of questions that I don't, I'm really more so asking these questions because I think these will be like the ongoing challenges of materializing said plan. But just to kind of see what you might say now and put them all on our record and, you know, really just to highlight them for any folks at home who might be watching. I think funding has been covered, so I won't cover that. But I think one of the other challenges of implementing this plan will be the internal coordination that's required amongst departments and the complexities of that. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to the departments that would be involved in this and maybe any early ideas on what that internal coordination will look like. I know a lot of it is kind of talked about in relationship to the, hopefully the soon coming transportation department, but I just think it's important to talk to that. Cause I know on my end, a lot of times I see the way that the lack of communication between departments sometimes impacts the quality of projects and even the difficulty of just getting certain things done.
Sure. Yes, I, I think, you know, the, the journey of this plan is only just getting started tonight. Right? There's a lot of things to operationalize in the plan. I do want to point out that in some cases, we have already started using it in terms of the high injury network data, thinking about future projects. Some of the street design framework we've already started using and some traffic studies. But there's a lot more to do. I think in, so you asked the question, which, which departments? I think the departments we're familiar with, you know, this department, Board of Public Service, Streets Department, Parks Department to, to some extent. I think there's some ideas that we can operationalize relatively quickly to strengthen some partnerships with, with the other transportation agencies that we work with. I think, you know, some of it, I think the, the big sort of policy ideas happen at kind of the leadership level and the elected level. That can take maybe a little more time and is going to require a little more dialogue. And the way things shake out, you know, it may not look exactly like what is suggested in the plan. But I think the, if we keep the, the goals, which I think are very clear and specific, if we keep those goals in mind as we get into that decision-making and implementation phase, hopefully, you know, we can enact this through some good policy changes. And I think, you know, at the staff level, there was great participation by city staff in the development of the plan. And so there's already some familiarity with it. And I think, you know, departments, the, the aspects that departments are capable of doing kind of on their own. I think for the most part, people are ready to, to use the plan.
Thank you. My next question, I, I think when I was reading through the policy recommendations, which for obvious reasons was of extreme interest to me. And we had a chance to kind of have a soft walk through a couple of weeks ago, say now. I think one of the things that comes up a lot is just the frustration that people have on kind of like the excessive backlogs that we run on because of the way certain funding things work. So like the 50/50 sidewalk is mentioned in the proposal and other things. And I know there's just, just constant frustration basically about just the maintenance backlogs often exceeding the funding available with the current way that things work. So any thoughts that you have around that point? Or those experiences or how maybe some of these recommendations might help with that? Any, any conversation there?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a big discussion because it gets into, you know, funding and sort of deferred maintenance. But the, kind of all the ideas in the plan point towards what I sometimes call programmatic maintenance or asset management based maintenance where we really, you kind of assign a lifespan to everything out in the right of way. And you figure out like what the replacement or maintenance cycle on it is. Particularly the arterials, because that's where crashes and fatalities happen. They're the most expensive and they tend to be in some places, areas that have the most deferred investment or deferred maintenance on them. So I think the case has to be made that we have to invest in those things sufficiently. And if we do, over time, I think we can build confidence or trust from residents that, you know, that street might not look great today, but we have a sense that the city is working through its network of big streets and they're all getting invested in. I think the challenge right now is that you can, people sometimes ask us, you know, when is this street scheduled to be paved, right? There really isn't. There's not a schedule today. And so if we have that type of thing where we can say, okay, it's three years away. Or look, it's not on the list now, but all the major streets get touched every decade. So it can't be that far away. I think that'll really help build confidence from the public that collectively the infrastructure is being taken care of.
Thank you. That's really all of my questions. I would just say like the only other maybe weakness that I feel like I saw in the plan that is, I get why we can't touch it. But I do think the transit service improvements are just more conceptual in nature since we're not, you know, I know we're not by state. I know they're kind of their own separate entity. But I definitely think it's going to be important for there to be some robust ongoing conversations there. And as a personal note, you know, I hope the same excitement enthusiasm they had around dumping all that money into those rails, that they can show that energy into, you know, being partners with us and coming to the table on implementing these plans and some of the great residential suggestions that I saw around how they would like to see that their public transit systems be improved.
Yeah, what I think we heard through this process is that residents really do care a lot about the public transit system. I think there is, I don't want to, we're going to be here well tonight, so I don't want to go into this too much. There's, there's definitely the capacity, I think, to strengthen the partnership on what I would call like more routine amenity improvements with by state metro. And I think we have some ideas on how to, how to do that in the shorter term.
Thank you.
I know Don wants to make some comments, but we're going to go next to the commissioners that are on the line. So Alderman Cohen, do you have some comments or questions?
I, I think most of the questions and comments that I have had have been asked and answered at this point. So just want to extend my thanks to the staff and the community members that have volunteered their time towards getting to this place. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And Commissioner Garmendia.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm very excited for the TNP to be adopted today. I had a few questions. Are there any components of the TNP recommendations that will come back before the planning commission? Or is this our last chance?
So I think, I think what we're doing tonight is we're just, we're, well, we'll see. But potentially we are adopting the TNP as part of the comprehensive plan, but it is intended to be able to change over time. You know, in the past, we've had the challenge of there is no plan to amend or change or update. As we adopt this plan, much as, you know, the, the planning commission has amended the sloop, you know, two dozen or maybe more times since it was initially adopted in 2004 with kind of incremental changes. I think that possibility will be here with the TNP. They could be, you know, there's now an established sort of prioritization of PDA work related to planning commission each year. So if there's a topic that needs to be further addressed, I think that would be the appropriate space to say, let's dig into, you know, this recommendation or this part of this chapter and clarify or expand or change. And staff would then be able to, I think, engage with that in the future.
So it's, um, so is one option for planning commissioners is to request like a addition to the TNP? Is that something commissioners might be able to do if they so chose to in the future?
I think it can certainly be requested, yes.
Yeah, requesting, no, no. Okay, my next question is kind of a fun one. How many, so once we pass the TNP, how many of our streets today do you think meet, would meet the new street design standards?
Yes, so I wanna, I'm going to be a little pedantic here and say they're not standards, they're guidelines. So what, it's a framework. So the, the, the sort of analogy I use is that the zoning code defines kind of the spectrum of things you can build, right? It defines like the building envelope and things that are permitted and maybe things that are not permitted. And that is kind of, but it doesn't, the zoning code doesn't design each new building, right? And I think that's kind of the right analogy here, that the street design framework provides a foundation for how the city or a partner agency will think about projects at the beginning and think about the palette or the menu of design elements that should go into a project. And they'll start from that point. We have been sort of informally using a design approach that looks kind of a lot like the street design framework over the last several years. But at certain points, especially if we go sort of more than five years ago, it was like, some of these dynamics were quite contentious. Having the street design framework, I think, kind of gets us fully over that hurdle where we say there's lots of design elements we can use and we will apply them in a context sensitive way based on the type of street, where it is and the project budget and scope, et cetera. So I want to talk through it that way. I think another way of answering your question is that most of the design options we are now considering on many projects. And applying them as, you know, as we can afford to essentially with each project.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question. And Scott, perhaps you can provide some of your insight from your experience as an alderman. For the, I also, like Alderman Sonnier, was most interested in Chapter Six, Policy and Ordinance Revisions. But what wasn't in that section was a schedule or a priority list or a discussion of kind of gating items for implementation of those policy and ordinance revisions. So are there any of those recommendations that should come first from the DMP standpoint?
Yeah, I, so I think the three I highlighted in the presentation are maybe the really important ones and the ones that are also maybe have some challenges associated with them potentially. I think a lot of things stem from the, the capital process. Just in how we conceptualize or how we think of the categories of things that we spend money on through the capital process. So that I think is a place where if we start there, some of the other changes are a little bit downstream from that, I think. So that's probably something that should be prioritized on the earlier side.
Well, that's all my questions. I wanted to close by saying, you know, the president's office at the Board of Aldermen, I mean, I think generally the Board of Aldermen is going to be very supportive of adopting these changes. They're not all going to be smooth sailing as we've tried to implement some of the suggestions previously. But, sorry, we have a, we stand at the ready to begin implementation on the, to make this plan a reality. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. Uh, Scott, the whole team, thank you. A lot of work. I think you know, one of the things that I'd like to point out, make a comment, was when you were talking about all the services that we need to amend in. It's also transportation services to ensure residents that don't have access to cars or don't particularly want a car or a city that helps those as individuals and help modes of transportation and not cars. So kudos for thinking about that, making sure it's on our, our mindset. That's a pretty important thing. With that, I'll ask you just a fun little question for you to end on. If we were, be sitting in your living room, how many bicycles would be in your house?
My, my lovely spouse makes me put them in the basement. So there, if one is in the living room, she doesn't take her long to see it. But the basement's, it's, it's a disaster. I, I need, I need more room for, biking's fun. I could use more room, yes.
One thing we ought to do is we have a mayor representative that's on the planning commission. She made an announcement today that's relevant to this.
Sure. Thank you, Don. Yeah, that's true. The mayor did announce this week that she hired James Jackson as the new director of streets. And obviously with this, we talk a lot about design and things like that. But maintenance is of course a very important part of it as well. And so I think it would be a nice sort of welcome gift as he starts his job on Monday if we adopt this today.
Outcast has a great song called, "I'm Sorry, Mr. Jackson."
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Some recommended language for our motion?
Yes, can we, oh, thanks, James. So just to be official, since this is part of the comprehensive plan, I'll, I'll read these. So the requested action is that the Transportation and Mobility Plan, inclusive of the full document distributed on October 8th of this year. And the recommended changes outlined in Exhibit B. And any additional changes approved by planning commission motion is hereby adopted as the transportation element of the city of St. Louis Comprehensive Plan. Also that the executive director of the Planning and Urban Design Agency of the city of St. Louis is hereby directed to notify all entities requiring notification under the listed ordinances and state codes of the adoption of the Transportation Mobility Plan as a transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan. And consisting with planning commission authority, changes to maps listed in the future map maintenance and updates section of the resolution are delegated to planning and urban design agency staff and will be summarized in an annual memo to the planning commission.
And will come with additional funding to do that?
Do I have a motion?
I, I move second.
Alderman Cohen?
Aye.
Alder, Alderman Sonnier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubman?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, commissioners.
We are now ready to move on to the planned unit development on the Hill. Oh, if anyone needs water to warm their day, there is water for Alexis.
Anybody could have?
The stamp presentation, then move on to the applicant presentation.
To that point, I want it noted that I did bring my suit jacket, but I I will not be wearing it for this presentation. It is warm. You ready for me? All right. Good evening, commissioners. It's a treat to be here. My name is James Pfister. I am a senior planner with the Planning and Urban Design Agency. We know each other well. I am going to be presenting on a petition for a planned unit development. This is technically the first phase of the Planned Unit Development District process. I'll get into all of the different steps. The purpose here is to review and to recommend the sketch plan for a proposed planned unit development district in the Hill neighborhood. The recommended action by staff is that the planning commission finds the conditions for the approval of a PUD sketch plan have been met and recommend approval with one condition of the sketch plan for what we are calling the La Colina Square PUD to the Board of Aldermen. First, I want to do some background about what a planned unit development district is because we don't bring these to the planning commission that often. It's a zoning tool, much like a community unit plan. It's almost akin to a very localized special use district. It operates sort of like a, an overlay zone, but it describes specific entitlements for that parcel or collection of parcels related to a specific development project. So rather than rezoning a parcel to a specific district, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, now I know my ABCs, we are describing exactly what is allowed in that parcel. It is accompanied by an ordinance with a couple of levels of review by the planning commission. The purpose of the PUD is to provide a sort of level of flexibility that our very old zoning code doesn't always afford, you know, to accommodate for changes in construction standards, to deal with particularly tricky sites, and, you know, any number of reasons that the stated goals potentially of the zoning code cannot be achieved by the strict letter of the law of the zoning code. I think the most recent PUD that you all might be familiar with is what's known as the Veterans Community Project, also sometimes referred to as the Veterans Tiny Homes up near Grand and Aldean. There are 50 tiny homes in this project. They used to PUD because nowhere in our zoning code would allow something this funky and this specific, and it would have required scores and scores of variances for each dwelling unit. So the Planned Unit Development District was a useful tool for achieving these goals in a much more streamlined way, speed up the development process without, you know, just completely blowing up the entitlements on these, on these parcels. So I mentioned that it's a three-step process. This is the first phase that we're in tonight. And the project will actually come back to the planning commission at a later date. What we're doing tonight is reviewing the sketch plan. And I did a handy-dandy scribble around it. This is what we're doing. But it's also where you all as commissioners get to have the most sort of discussion about what the final product look like, looks like. Because after this, a board bill is introduced, a draft board bill has been provided. That is still subject to change. It's a pretty simple thing. It basically says a PUD exists in accordance with the application with planning commission's recommendation. And then lastly, a development plan is finalized and it comes back to the planning commission with the sort of sole purpose of making sure that the final development plan is in compliance with the previously approved sketch plan so that any prospective developer can't get their sketch plan approved, make all sorts of changes, and try to, you know, push it through the planning commission. At that point, once the development plan has been reviewed by the planning commission, then permits can be issued. There's no additional zoning review necessary. For those of you who are familiar with the variance process, this is gonna be a much quicker timeline than if a project needed anywhere from one to 40 variances. So let's talk about this one in particular. The PUD proposed is at the street address 5701 Wilson Avenue, City Block 4022. It's in the Hill neighborhood. It's just one parcel. It is currently vacant and it is just over four acres in total land area. It's bordered by Wilson Avenue to the south, Interstate 44 to the north, a public storage facility to the west, and homes along Wilson Avenue and Barra Court to the east. The owners of the property and the petitioners today are Wilson Avenue Properties LLC, McBride Homes. Just a snapshot of the site context. One of the reasons why I blacked out the site right there is because, as some of you may be familiar, it used to have a school. We'll get into some of those specifics. It is currently a green, it is a blank site. It's vacant. It is very close to Interstate 40, but it's also close to the heart of the Hill, very close to Hampton Avenue. Yeah, you know where we're at. I wanted to provide some background for the the site itself. I'm a history nerd. I like looking at old maps. So this is a snapshot from the old sandburn fire insurance maps. This is from a plate from 1926. I'm gonna reorient it so it's maybe a little easier to see what's going on. You can see the rail lines and Manchester Avenue at the top of the screen right now and Hampton on the left side of the screen going down. What we're looking at in the middle is the old Christie Clay Company. And one of the reasons why we don't see it, oh, let's look at this, too. Beautiful old historic aerial from 1937. The red box generally indicates where 5701 Wilson is. In this imagery, Wilson actually hasn't been constructed yet, so it's a little hard to cite it, but I tried my best to get it in the right spot. And when you look at modern aerials, try to preserve that as best we can. We don't see the Christie Clay Company anymore because Interstate 40 is there. This is aerial imagery from, or 44, pardon me. Thank you, Stan. This is aerial imagery from 2024. We don't have updated aerial imagery showing that the site has been, the school has been demolished and the site is now vacant. In 1968, oh, pardon me, I, there's there's additional context in your packet. But in between the period of the Christie Clay Company operating the site here and the Department of Education buying the property in 1968, anecdotal testimony from residents, people that remember it, said this parcel sort of acted as an informal landfill, just sort of like a, you know, junky post-industrial parcel for a long time until Department of Education purchased it and they opened the Hubert Wheeler School, which is a school for disabled students. Closed in 1994, sat vacant for a while. It was eventually leased to Harrisdale State University, who operated it until 2014, and it has been vacant since. Because of its past uses, both as a former clay mine in the area, as well as an informal landfill, there was some history of environmental contamination. But the site has been remediated by the applicant to Missouri Department of Natural Resources standards for some types of residential, which includes attached single-family townhomes. The applicant is here and will be able to provide additional information about site conditions. The current zoning on the parcel is K, the unrestricted district. This is a very permissive district. In fact, very few things are not allowed. There are a couple of conditional uses allowed. But one thing that is explicitly prohibited within this district is residential. So some type of zoning action would need to take place, be that a rezoning or a PUD or variances, in order to get residences permitted here at this site. It is immediately adjacent to some other K-zoned districts, some J to the south, light industrial, commercial, and then some B, two-family dwelling districts to the east and to the south. Here we go. So let's talk about the actual application in front of us today. In the staff report, I refer to it as 5701 Wilson Avenue PUD. For the purposes of the future action, we're referring to it as the La Colina Square PUD sketch plan, or PUD. The sketch plan application that's in front of us today contains a development that would construct 78 single-family attached townhomes across 20 buildings arranged on the parcel around a roughly U-shaped parking lot roadway area. The site will include 127 surface parking spaces, open space amenities, including a small dog park. One of the residential buildings will address Wilson Avenue. The rest will face the interior of the parking roadway. The eastern entrance of the development would meet the intersection at Wilson Avenue and January Avenue. There we go. So this has been a process long in the making, quite deliberative, quite productive. The process started in the spring when the applicant sought to rezone the parcel to a district that would better permit residential development. As is unfortunately often the case with our archaic zoning code, there was no appropriate district that would allow for this exact type of development by right without a myriad of variances. Just a little plug for that's the reason why we are upgrading our zoning code. It's not that much fun to work with. Between staff and the applicant, we determined that a planned unit development was the best route in order to get this project moving. I will say through the months that we've been engaged with the applicant on this process, there's been a lot of productive back and forth. A number of topics have arisen about the site plan and some aspects of the development, including the orientation of the buildings, about how the entrance off of Wilson could align with the January and Wilson intersection. Is there room for a reduction in parking and increasing front and side yard width, creating more space or breathing room between the units? And is there an option for continuing the streetscape on Wilson Avenue? We had, you know, good back and forth and the applicant, when they come up to speak, can provide a little more context for the specific choices that were made for this sketch plan. The first site plan that was presented to us had none of the buildings oriented towards Wilson. The PUD application in front of us contains one of the buildings facing Wilson. Applicant determined that having the rest of the houses face Wilson, which would front industrial or commercial uses across Wilson, might hurt the marketability of the units. The applicant did agree to sort of realign access to the site on the eastern access to that January and Wilson intersection, maintaining that full three-point, three-way intersection. As to reduction in parking or the reducing any number of parking, and we'll hear some, some, some comment later today, might also harm the marketability as well as disrupt or offend some of the nearby residents. You know, staff sought to create a little bit more green space, a little bit more elbow room in between the units, and additional green space was added from the additional site plan to what you see in the sketch plan application today. But there are some specific site conditions that McCred's gonna tell us a little more about that make different layouts a little difficult, and any loss of more units would make the project potentially infeasible. And lastly, the attempting to continue that streetscape along Wilson Avenue. In our discussions, the applicant has agreed to the one condition that we're recommending, staff is recommending tonight, is installing and maintaining a tree lawn between the sidewalk and Wilson Avenue along the length of the development along the southern side to sort of like pull the streetscape from the Hill neighborhood, continuing it through the end of the project development so that there's no appreciable difference in the pedestrian experience walking along Wilson Avenue until you get past the development. Now, I mentioned that there are specific conditions that a sketch plan application has to meet in order to be approved as a part of a PUD. We're gonna go through each one of these. The first condition is that the values in the buildings of the character of the property adjacent to the area included in said plan will not be adversely affected. Second, that the proposed development is consistent with the intent and purposes of the zoning code to promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And that the proposed development plan is consistent with any previously approved development plan that may affect the site and with the city's comprehensive plan. First and foremost, that the development won't be of any harm to the values of the buildings and characters around. This is going to be 78 new units, scores of new residents, supporting adjacent uses. There's a mix of uses around it, ranging from residential to sort of low-impact commercial and light industrial. Talking about the designer character, the adjacent structures vary widely in style and material. Staff consider that this condition is met by the sketch plan. Number two, that the proposed development is consistent with the goals of the strategic, or the zoning code. You know, we're all well aware of the city and nationwide shortage of housing options. New housing options will be a net benefit to the public health, safety, and morals, general welfare. Also, this development process has assisted in the abatement of harmful conditions on the the site, removing contamination pathways between residents and pedestrians and formerly contaminated site. And also that this PUD will prevent potentially harmful future uses that are currently permitted in the K unrestricted district. So staff considers this condition to be met. And thirdly, that this proposed development is consistent with previous plans and the city's comprehensive plan. That there are no previous redevelopment plans for this parcel. So staff has reviewed the application against the 2025 Strategic Land Use Plan. In the Strategic Land Use Plan, it is designated as a higher intensity neighborhood. Higher intensity neighborhoods are intended to be primarily residential. They're supposed to have a wide range of building scales and heights, but allow buildings of up to five to eight stories. These may be very dense areas with lots of units per building. Parking would be discouraged in front or to the side of buildings. An emphasis will be on walkability and in places where there will be access to transit or other amenities. So in short, many types of housing, parking discouraged to the front or to the side. You might wonder, why is this parcel in particular get the designation for higher intensity? Couple of reasons. One, community input. Two, access to the interstate and high-volume transit corridors like the 90 bus on Hampton, the 31 bus on Manchester. I could, I could see someone walking or biking up there. And just the size of the parcel. It can handle a lot of units. So when comparing the sketch plan to a medium or a higher intensity neighborhood, the underlying use and the scale of density is perfectly aligned with the designation. We want it to be primarily residential. We want to have lots of units. This is 78 units on four acres. We also believe that this type of development may encourage other properties around this parcel to transition to residential or to a friendlier mix of uses as well. Sometimes these things, these happen. And as you'll see, to the west of this Wilson parcel, the designations are, you know, more higher intensity neighborhood and a medium intensity node. So we want some residential. We want a mix of uses. And this PUD and the development would be dramatically better aligned with the designation than the types of uses that are currently allowed in the K district. And there are other broad goals of the Strategic Land Use Plan. Finding more housing options that meet the diverse needs of the community and very importantly, reactivating vacant parcels in a way that can support, retain, and attract new residents. Now, there are some site or some aspects of the site plan that fall short of the urban design goals of this designation. The parking orientation is difficult to make a line with the goals of the strategic land use plan because we don't want to see building or parking between buildings in the street. But because of the size of the parcel, you can squint and say, well, there's no parking between the buildings and the streets or it's not that much. It but it but it's certainly more parking than the strategic land use plan would like to see within a higher intensity neighborhood. We are generally trying to encourage less car dependency. But to that that point about attempting to encourage wonderful things with the strategic land use plan, we're in a sort of difficult regulatory moment because we have our new sloop, but we still have our old code. And we also have old expectations and processes of development in the city that we are trying to get people on board with and trying to create a, you know, a new status quo of consistency and clarity when it comes to development processes and review processes. Also important to note that some elements of staff input that have helped this sketch plan achieve some of the goals of this land use plan and this designation have already been incorporated into the sketch plan application over the course of our collaboration. There is one condition that we are recommending as a part of the approval of the sketch plan. And it is the installation of a tree lawn that that is the, you know, the grass in between a sidewalk and the curb and the roadway. Currently, as the site is constructed, as it's sitting right now on Wilson Avenue, there is no tree lawn. Just on the, do I have a laser pointer on here? I don't know. I don't think I do. On the far eastern edge, you can kind of see in light green where there is a tree lawn in between the sidewalk and the street. And then it curves north just a scotch and then it's sidewalk, curb, street, nothing in between. In our collaborative efforts, us and the applicant, they have agreed to install a tree lawn so that there is no appreciable difference when you're walking down the sidewalk down the north edge of Wilson Avenue between the experience at that last house that faces Wilson and the La Colina Square. Sort of preserve that sense of extension of the neighborhood. There's no change in pedestrian experience, slight buffer from the traffic on Wilson. We know Wilson is a busy street. Lots of cars and lots of trucks going in and out there. So that will add to some comfortability of pedestrians and residents in these proposed homes. So with the included condition that the applicant install a tree lawn that extends along the north side of Wilson Avenue through the length of the development, staff finds that the third condition has also been met. I included in the presentation some site context photos that I took a couple of weeks ago. We'll skip through these unless anybody wants to dwell on them or return to them. They are in your packet as well. At this point, I'm going to bring the representatives from McBride, the applicant up here. They're going to introduce themselves, go through some slides, and then we'll go to the public hearing.
This does work most of the time.
Perfect. Hello, all. We are very excited to be here tonight. My name is Jake Eilerman. I'm CEO McBride Homes. I'm also a city resident. I actually live on the hill. And we have our whole team here tonight. We have Jeremy Roth, who's our president of our land company. We have Jeannie Allmiller, who's the president of McBride Homes. We have our associate general counsel and land. And we have George Stock with Stock Engineering here to answer any questions that they come up, but we got the the full team here tonight. What makes this project really exciting for us is we've been working even before we worked with the city staff over two years to get this project to a residential level. It started with the state of Missouri had it under ownership and they submitted RFP to the city and we we viewed it as an opportunity and the neighborhood that I personally live in to make this a nice residential similar to our great successful project in the hill on, we called it La Colina. It was fifty eight single family homes and twenty eight townhouses and bring that same design quality and standards to this side of the hill. So we're really excited to be here. I'm gonna try to use this. So I wanted to start off by just showing the 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 elevations of this product. You can see we have a it's predominantly bricks with some modern elements. It has those black windows, some some metal accents above the window awnings. But it's very similar to the quality of our townhomes we did on Daggett Avenue that we just probably completed construction on maybe eighteen months ago or so. Here's just some more architectural runnings, but I just wanted to start with the context of the the elevations we're providing here for this product. Floor plan wise, it's over a thousand square feet, two bedroom, two bath. It's a great product type. It's very similar to our townhouse project on the other side of the hill. Great for young professionals, empty nesters. It's it's just a, it creates a very new product and housing opportunity in the hill versus a lot of that comes available is just single family residential within existing home types. So just a little bit of background about McBride. I mean, we are Missouri's largest builder. We've been creating neighborhoods for almost eighty years where we'll celebrate our eightieth anniversary in April. Just last year, we closed a thousand houses in Missouri. We build all over and we do all shapes and sizes of different products. We can do a nine hundred home master community in St. Charles, but we also can do more complex projects like the La Colina project on the hill. We did Crestwood Mall, for example, on a very complex site. We are doing the Woods Mill Crossing Shopping Mall right now, which is a hundred and twelve condos. So we have a lot of flexibility and we use, we really take a lot of time to make the right product for the right project. And I think that's what we've done here today. One of the things that stability is our strength, being here for eighty years and building homes in the community for so long time. This is a project that you will see to fruition if it gets approved and we're very excited about this project. And then, I mean, we have a lot of experience in this, obviously, with especially in the city of St. Louis with our recent projects in this recent location. So obviously, this site, I mean, it had a lot of challenges when we started looking at this site. I mean, this site, you have forty four to the north. You have single family homes. To the east, you have public storage to the west, a red roof inn. You have access to obviously Hampton. And then on the south, you have, we face a little bit of residential, then a lot of commercial. And how do we make truly a transition site from single family to pretty dense commercial when you get to the Red Roof Inn and Hampton? I mean, it's very, it's a very dense area. On top of the logistic urban planning challenges, we also, the site was owned by the state. There has been environmental problems and we worked for eighteen months with D and R to get to a point to allow for attached multifamily homes on this site. And that's where that's what allowed us to enter the conversations with staff and work with staff on many of the plan changes we'll talk about tonight. But it allowed us to get to a point of changing this dilapidated site in eyesore. It's been vacant for twenty plus years to make a new vibrant residential community within the city. And I think we've hit all the the best plan possible when you have all these factors coming into the plan. So as I mentioned, the site history, I mean, it was a state school. It closed in nineteen ninety five. It was leased until twenty fourteen. It's been vacant, abandoned. I mean, when we took over the the site and closed on it, I mean, there was a safety risk, people walking around it. So we demolished the building. The other thing too is as staff mentioned, that currently zone K unrestricted use, it can allow almost anything but residential hotels, factories, junkyards. And I think this is a great opportunity to make this a residential development in an area that needs residential. Obviously, it's got great access, highway, commercial, industrial. That great access also allows for great pedestrian walkability to the neighborhood and other areas and the as staff was saying, the bus transportation and things like that. So good transition piece between residential and subdivisions. So I'm going to bring up our president of our land development company, Jeremy Roth, just to kind of give you an overview of the environmental and how we got to be able to present today.
Good evening. Thank you. So I just wanted to touch on two components of the property. And James touched on these, but these two components really led to the use and the layout and the plan that we have and why the plan that we're presenting is the most feasible and really the only feasible plan that that will work for this site. So first on the environmental aspect of the property is as soon as there's there was a history of environmental contamination on the site. The state knew that. So as soon as we got the property under contract, we we started doing some testing on the site. We did some soil sampling, some groundwater testing, vapor sampling. And the good news is is the environmental issues and the testing that came back weren't as bad as as what the state thought and what some of the results were from twenty five or so years ago. So number one, the groundwater was not a problem. Number two, the the vapor issue was not a problem, but there were still some some contaminants in the soil. So we will have further remediation of the site, which will be costly. And part of the the state's RFP is we were required to sign a restrictive covenant for the property. So the the testing was a good thing because then in that covenant, the state was able to say non residential uses are approved. Multifamily residential uses are approved. However, single family uses are not approved. And the reason for that is this covenant will run in perpetuity with this property. Because there will be some contaminants way down deep that will remain and and the state and D N R want to make sure that the management plan for the property remain in place. So that'd be, they can come and inspect the property at any time in the future. They they will require an annual report on the property. And what they want to make sure is nobody's digging down really deep into the soil. So they are, D N R is okay with multifamily uses because with the establishment of a homeowners association, they have one point of contact. Rather than if if it was a single family development and there could be, you know, twenty, thirty, forty different points of contact. So that's why D N R and the state are okay and approving of multifamily residential. So that's the first component. The second component is the soils issues on the site. And this talks about some of the cleanup that we we will still have to do and work with D N R to ultimately receive a certificate of completion before we can start building homes. And then the other issue is the soil issue, the structural soil issue, not not talking environmental or hazardous anymore. Now we're talking about supporting foundations of structures. And James mentioned that this was an old clay mine historically. And then after the clay was mined out of it, it became a landfill. It became a dump site. So there's in various depths of ten to fifteen, upwards of thirty feet of uncompacted, unstructural fill on the site. So the only way to build structures on the site is to peer the structures. So in all those those twenty buildings, those multifamily buildings that you saw on the site plan, we will have have to install structural peers going down to get to something solid in the substructure to support those units. So again, that's the other reason why the the project that you see, and we went through a lot of iterations of different plans and projects, but the iteration you see of seventy eight attached townhomes is the most feasible and really the only feasible use of the property.
Yeah, as you can see from Jeremy's description of the environment and the soil compaction, that's how we got to the product type that we showed you at the beginning. It needs to be a compact because of the pairing. We're going to do grade beams and things like that. It has to be a compact product at the same time to allow for this constructibility. But as I mentioned earlier to the allowed uses in K, I mean, it is a wide range of anything almost non residential. I mean, it says any purpose whatsoever, not in conflict with any ordinances of the city regulating nuisance, but that could include acid manufacturing, cement processing, bathhouses, billiards, hotels, pawn shops, salvage yards and stockyards. So I mean, this is what could somebody could go into the city today for a permit on. If you go to the next slide. So I mean, our goal here was to offer a housing option that meets the diverse need of the community. This is a great new product and adds housing to the city. Reimagining this vacant site now. We did demo the school already as part of us closing on the ground. And it's it's got community. It's got public spaces. I mean, this is going to be a family friendly, safe, accessible spot that people can go enjoy the neighborhood, go enjoy Barra Park and all the other amenities within the neighborhood. So here's the overall site plan. So this is has changed a lot of times, but obviously, working with staff since kind of February or March range, we've really made some good compromises and development of the plan to, I think, really hit hit the hit the best opportunity for what this site and all the constraints we continuously talk about to allow for a nice new plan in the city. So I mean, you can see some of the distinctions in the plan. We we did face one block of building on Wilson that meets the adjacent residential across the street, January, which is the the entry point on the right. We align January right there. And then anything to the west of January, that's commercial space. We are very, we feel very strongly that facing those residential units on the left side there, interior, people would much rather see the brick houses and their neighbor's front door than seeing a back of an industrial site. There's dumpsters out there and things like that. So that that January entry point is kind of where we distinct near the residential on the right and commercial on the left. We've implemented the tree lawn. We've agreed to that with the city of allowing the sidewalk to be pushed back to mirror the residential on the right. And then it would end with the commercial on the left and and meet the added tree lawn to the no tree lawn where public storage is. We added a dog park in the top left corner. We added more green space. You down below, just up a little bit, there's a pavilion right there, another spot for community. We also added some offset. Well, this was the original plan, but we all, we added some offset trees within the parking structure to to create some green space and not make it a sea of parking to also just give it a better green space feel. And then you can see we've added sidewalks interior of the space. The biggest thing too is in the to the, one of the other restrictions we have is working with MSD and doing a detention basin that meets the need because all the water is collecting to this large site. So that is why another constraint we have is we can't go past, you can barely see it on the screen I'm looking at, but that black line represents kind of a retaining wall detention basin that is going to collect all the water for the site. So this is, this is a long time coming. I can't say again how excited our group is to be able to work with the city staff and figure this this very challenging site. I mean, it all the way from the state to the city, M D N R. And this is the the plan we're bringing forward to you today. So I'll just double check if we got any other slides. If you want to go to the next slide, please. So we've already talked about the project highlights. It's seventy eight lots, twenty buildings. I mean, there is over an acre of common ground when you include all the green space around this site. So that's twenty five percent green space. We do have one point six parking spots. We submitted a an engineer letter to the city staff also reiterating that one point five parking spots is kind of the industry standard for a product type like this, just two baths over just over a thousand square foot. So there should be ample parking within within the space and self contained within the space. I think that's really important. We are very confident that the parking that we've included and that even include working with city staff to reduce the parking a little bit, that we are at a middle ground of that one point six right now. So we're above what the engineer thinks we need. But it should be very comfortable to keep all that parking within self contained. So the other last thing too is what Jeremy was mentioning on the the importance of M D N R and that HOA, that one unit, the covenant that stays with this property. The other thing is we will be, there will be maintenance provided. So all the lawns will be maintained, just like our town, other townhouse projects. It's not self maintained by the buyers. It will be a maintenance, the HOA will hire a maintenance company to cut all the lawns, trim all the plantings, keep the exterior of the buildings look nice because on the HOA will be actually responsible for the exterior of the buildings too. So it's it's a lot of covered maintenance and will make this project look great for a very, very long time. So lastly, just part of our process is every buyer gets to go down to our design studio in Chesterfield. So they get to we'll have a many kitchen options, backsplash options, very modern different interior offerings within this product that the buyers will get to personalize. We have multiple kitchen layouts, bathroom options, tile, culture, marble. So there'll be a lot of personalizing within the interior of these units too. So in conclusion, I mean, we we really, when we started this two years So in conclusion, I mean, we, we really, when we started this two years ago was to revitalize this vacant, unsightly and unsafe property to a residential development. As I said, I personally live on the hill. I found this as a great opportunity to use our, our whole team's horsepower to really turn this site into a new housing option within the hill, similar to what we did. And hopefully it spurs more development like was talked about earlier in the presentation of with the traffic plan. And we do have staff recommended approval and we're seeking a positive recommendation tonight. So I thank you all for hearing us today. And that's the conclusion of our presentation.
It's time to move into the public hearing. If we have anyone who's joined us online since the last public hearing this evening, and you would like to speak about this project, please enter your name in the chat. And then we will call on you at the appropriate time.
Move to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Previous role.
Any objections to previous role?
All right, commissioners first, I'm going to summarize the two pieces of public comment that we received by email. You've got copies in front of you, but just going to summarize them for the record. There was one letter voicing support for the sketch plan application with a couple of recommendations, one being that perhaps we could make the western entrance to the development a right in and right out only because of the traffic concerns along Wilson Avenue and having two points of in and out of the property, potentially with people turning left, just clustering up Wilson Avenue. The member of the public also suggested that the developer and the HOA retain the right to install gated access to the property in the future. There was another letter voicing opposition to the sketch plan application. Citing things like product design, concerns about resale ability of the units and also about there being not enough parking spaces. Seeking, the author was seeking at least two dedicated parking spaces per housing unit. There we go.
Thanks very much. Then we'll go ahead and start through the list. And I would ask that you introduce yourself when you begin speaking.
My name is Chris Obradovitz. I live on Daggett, right across from Barra Park. I want to thank Madam Chairwoman and Council for hearing us tonight. I appreciate the presentation made, but I would like to reflect back on the presentation that was made about a week ago at St. Ambrose. When the question arose about why there are 78 units that are on this plan? When initially it was for 58. And it was the statement that was made that that was never a part of it. However, I would suggest, and I urge you to go back to a Channel 2 news report in November of 2024 where it was stated very specifically that it was to be 58 units. In that same clip, Alderman at the time, Joseph Valmer spoke in favor of it. But I believe he was probably speaking in favor of it because it was 58 units. Now, 58 units makes a world of difference in this planning. So with respect to your history, sir, I think you need to take a look at that. With respect to the traffic, and again, I it's gone. I appreciated the safety aspects of the city streets. But as it stands right now and this morning, just in anticipation of being here this evening, I proceeded down Wilson toward Hampton and it took me three stoplights to get through to the street. Now, the problem there is the fact that you have traffic coming down Hampton who either want to get onto 44 going east or west, which creates a traffic log. Now, I invite all of you to come by in the morning and you can experience it for just as well. So when you put in, I believe you said 250 parking spaces? Let's, is that correct? 127? Well, that will lead me to another point. But when you add that number of cars into the mix, I believe that you're going to create even more, an even more dangerous situation than already exists. I shudder when I think of some of the young drivers that have to try to negotiate that, not to mention some of us seasoned citizens that do it are some of the people on their way to work. So I don't think that not having a traffic study is reasonable. I don't, I don't mean to make a decision for you, but I would like to try to influence your decision that allowing this to go forward without a traffic study puts the feasibility of anything happening after this development squarely on your shoulders. Do you want to underwrite that? I don't think you do because I think you're all genuine, good people wanting the best for the city of St. Louis and the hill. Now let me expand on that a bit further. In the city of St. Louis, we have two major attractions. First being the St. Louis Arch. The second is the hill. We love it. Manja is the, everybody on the hill, manja, which means eat. We have the best restaurants in the, in the United States. But what that causes is hectic traffic problems, parking problems. And I direct you to the Antonino situation where the board said that they could not proceed with their expansion without providing off-parking and off-parking contract for at least 14 more cars. Now I want you to imagine homes which are $300,000. How many of you who are single or married, especially if you have a partner, will not have more than one car? Now, it might be great that we're trying to get to more commuter buses. I think it's great. But the reality of the situation is a couple who is buying a house there is likely a dual income family. I don't know of a dual income family that gets by with one car. I take that back. I do know one. But the majority do not have one car. So I urge all of you while considering passing this to consider how you're going to get two cars into the parking space in front of you, which has an allocation of 1.6 cars. Think about it. How are you going to do that? When you can tell me, I will be in, first one in favor of this. But the fact of the matter is you can't. A secondary reason for not voting to proceed with this tonight. It's wrong. And as I said at St. Ambrose, who wants that responsibility on them? They don't. There's also a question with respect to the surveys. The people along Barakot, Barakort, sorry, have voiced public opposition to this because the surveys that they have as recent as a few years ago show a different property line. Now, there, I am not an attorney and I know you got one here. I believe that's you, sir. Or ma'am, I'm not sure. Ma'am, I apologize. But there is such a form called adverse possession. And some of these people have had that property with her, in their possession, some of them for 50 years. Now, if we use their property lines, the property lines which are being put forth by McBride do not fit standards. Would you agree with that? Yeah. Or are you aware of it? You're not aware of property line issues? Again, we announce a third, excuse me, I'm getting a little dry mouth, a third reason why this should not be approved tonight. Because the property lines are not properly defined. All right. We've covered the safety concerns. Let's go one more. We talked about the wonderful, the fact that we enjoy the parks on the hill and you, you would agree with that. But keep in mind that the parks on the hill are not a Monday through Friday. It's the weekend too. I live across from the park. We have park lights on until 10 o'clock at night and many off, many times it's being utilized at that time, which means that by the, when you consider the amount of extra traffic with teams and children and adults using those facilities, it's a lot more traffic, but we're able to handle that now. We've got it under control now. But when you add all of this extra, it's not going to work well, if at all. So I implore you, please be considerate of the residents of the hill and the magnificent, magnificent properties that they have developed over a period of time. And don't be scared by this K zoning commission. That's fear mongering. I'll stand in the way of that every day. And everyone of you would too, if you live there. Because I can tell you two people who have tried to buy that property and were turned down and they're city leaders who could have put something there that was fantastic and provided job, income and opportunities on the hill that don't exist now and will not exist with this development. There's no income for the hill with this. Yeah, they're going to tend to go to the restaurants. They're running at capacity as it is. We've got a restaurant on Shaw that's booked four months in advance for reservations. You think they really need more? You know the answer to that. I don't need to tell you. So please, I urge you, you have to really give strong consideration to going forward with this tonight. It's not in the interest of the second most visited place in the city of St. Louis that generates revenues an unbelievable amount of revenue for the city. There's many more points. I'm getting tired. I'm sure everybody else is too. I thank you for your time. Please take all of that into consideration. My opinion is you should not approve this until the studies are done. The surveys are cleared. And there's, oh, there is one more thing. There's general consensus that the pool in the back for retention water, that's not big enough. And if it's not, which some people have figured that water is going to overflow on the I-44. Now, if you think about it, we've got the same issue over on Highway 40 by the zoo. Do you want to make that another one on I-44 by Hampton? Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Right, Robert Sepurza. Please introduce yourself and tell us the connection to the neighborhood.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sepurza. I was a member of the 2025 Strategic Land Use Plan Update Advisory Committee. And I am a current zoning upgrade community advisory committee member. As James mentioned, this is a kind of a gray zone where you've got something K unrestricted. And the SLOPE says that we are supposed to look at this as a higher intensity neighborhood. Page 64 of the SLOPE lists, I'm going to do the squinting at the parking that James alluded to. Page 64 of the SLOPE lists that there shall be no parking between the building and the street. Well, on the units that about Wilson, there's no parking there for a reason. That's a good thing. But in buildings 19 and 20 on the, on the north side, if you could bring up the sketch of the PUD. You can see clearly there's by my account, more than 60 parking spaces between those north two buildings and the street. Which the SLOPE says not, you know, a range of this or that, or this is encouraged or discouraged. The SLOPE makes very clear in higher intensity neighborhood, not allowed. We could speculate about what will happen in the zoning going forward, you know, a year from now and whenever we, you know, get there, but not allowed is pretty clear to me. This probably doesn't help with some of the parking concerns. But as somebody who is an, you know, hill resident and avid bicyclist and thrilled about the passing of the Transportation Mobility Plan, I think that folks like myself, young professionals living in the hill and looking to live in the hill and in a project like this would also, you know, enjoy their, their use of a bicycle or golf cart as, are, you know, again prolific on the hill. Just to be clear, I support density. I support a variety of housing mix, diversity of housing mix in my neighborhood, not just for the city, but like directly where I live. This plan to me is a little too car oriented. If you looked at the SLOPE, this might align more to medium intensity neighborhood than it does higher intensity in my mind. I recognize, you know, the adjacencies with Hampton. It's, it gets kind of busy, kind of industrial. But that's why we have the SLOPE, right, is to inform the vision, the strategy of land use for parcels and helping to define the transition zones as we, you know, go from the lower intensity residential that most of the rest of the hill is to someplace like Hampton that's a little bit busier. For almost opposite reasons as the gentleman before me, I would also urge you to not go forward with passing this PUD on the basis of, you know, the, in my mind, kind of egregious amount of parking inconsistent with its designation in the SLOPE for a higher intensity neighborhood designation. Thank you.
Hey Andrea Karinovic. I'll let you introduce yourself properly.
It is a very textbook Polish last name, so no worries. Counsel, my name is Andrea Karinovic. I am a resident of the hill and a immediate neighbor of the proposed site. So I am the one lone house that is on Wilson. Straight off the bat, I'm just going to get it out of the way. I would also urge you not to approve this. The first thing during the initial discussion, actually going back to the traffic discussion, I am surprised and flat out shocked that we are not doing a traffic impact survey. Having lived in my house since 2018, I cannot tell you the number of times I've almost been hit, either going out onto Hampton or coming back onto Hampton. And this is not just in the morning. This is not just at five o'clock in the middle of rush hour. This is also at midnight, one o'clock in the morning, coming back from the muni, coming back from friends' houses after Fourth of July. Coming back or leaving almost anytime I turn out that intersection. Now, to be fair, yes, there is a right-hand turn. But if there's a car in front of you at that traffic light trying to turn left, you can't move. You cannot get out of Wilson for at least one or two turns of the traffic light. Coming down Hampton to turn left onto Wilson, you can get maybe four cars if the front car scooches in a little bit into the left-hand turn lane. But God forbid you follow the signs and follow the existing traffic laws for that intersection that straight up say no left turn on red. Because I've had people come up that second lane and cut right in front of me. And I'm the one stopped in that front spot following the traffic laws. Now, I know this council can't do anything about that. I can't do anything about it other than laugh and say, you have a death wish, go right ahead. But that is something to consider. And when we're talking about adding 127 parking spaces that will hopefully be filled with 127 cars, that is something serious that is going to disrupt an already unsafe intersection. The numbers have fluctuated drastically since February. I would be okay with 58. And to the argument about feasibility, well, maybe this is the wrong project. Why does it have to be townhomes? There is a lot of opportunity here, absolutely. But I also think it's very short sighted to only say we have to put residential here. Yes, K has a lot of options. But one of the things that was not on that list, more restaurants. Something that's more community based. The entire list of items that was shown earlier was all something that, yes, none of us would want there. That's part of the reason we all, the neighbors had such a disagreement when I think it was Chevrolet a couple of years ago, tried to bring one of their company's repair shops and put it there. We raised the same issues then that we are now. You're bringing in a lot of traffic into an already You're bringing in a lot of traffic into an already congested area. And if you're bringing repair shops, that means you're bringing in tow trucks, which are gonna be bigger, which are gonna take up space, which is gonna back up Hampton, which is gonna back up forty-four. There's nowhere else to go in that intersection. Just because of where the egress is from forty-four, the inbound side to forty-four, and then of course Hampton itself. One of the things that McBride shared in a earlier meeting was that they're looking for single families. They're looking for the young professionals, as I said tonight. Wonderful. I fit that demographic myself. How are you gonna have young professionals in this kind of a neighborhood? With that many spots, to the point made earlier, you're looking at two incomes. Very few young professionals are coming out with just one breadwinner. Both parties are equally participating, which means there's going to be traffic, which means there's going to be cars. And who wants to be fighting with your neighbor for a car, for a parking spot? Because then what's gonna happen to those folks who don't have a parking space? Where are they gonna park? Are they gonna come down Wilson? Are they gonna take spots in front of my house, in front of my neighbors' houses? Where some of us don't have a driveway. Some of us don't have an alleyway to park in, so we have to park on the street. That's gonna take up our spaces too and just make that whole area even more congested than it already is. A lot of the comments that the staff raised seem to be about space. And how you fit everything and is this the right use of the space? I would ask us to go back to that. But not just the space here in this lot. The space getting into that lot. This plan is a little different than the one I saw a few months, few weeks ago when we met in the Hill Community Room. I like some of the changes. I appreciate the fact that they took my suggestion and added a dog park. But is that enough? Is that really going to make that kind of community that they say they're looking to build? The dog park's all the way in the back corner. There's nothing that brings them literally together in the middle. Which is again where I come back to my point of, is this really? The right type of place for the hill? For this community, for this area? It just seems like we're trying to fit literally a square peg into a octagonal hole. It just doesn't fit. And I can't imagine that anyone on this council. Would want to put the existing residents at risk. By forcing us to then have to live with the consequences of that increased traffic. Of more people coming in, young, old, in between. Who don't pay attention, who just blow through the traffic lights and run through everything. There are issues that are still in place. I can confirm that there have been debates over the property lines. And to some extent. It goes back as recent as two years ago when I put my fence in and got a permit from City Hall. And had city inspectors come down and look at where my fence was before we built anything. Are we gonna say that the city is wrong? Because now we are being asked to sign an easement that says if the fence falls, we have to move it. Because of this dispute over the property line. There are too many things that need to be resolved first before I would feel comfortable moving forward with anything. And I can hope that the council will see that wisdom and say, maybe not now. Solve the problems first and then look at moving forward. Thank you.
Do we have one speaker on, okay? Angela. We're ready for your comments. Please introduce yourself first.
Hi, my name is Angela Cacciatore and I am a resident of the hill. Um, I, my husband and I live directly behind the unit. Uh, the development, proposed development as well. We live on Bear Court. And we're also one of the residents that are having survey issues with, um, easement rights. Um, pretty much every speaker prior to me has touched on, on, on all the concerns that I had. The traffic study, I. Highly, highly, highly recommend. Um, since August first till current, there has been nineteen accidents at Wilson and Hampton Avenue. I've personally seen at least five in the last six months there. Um, so I really think a traffic study is important. Additionally, you know, with Wilson being a one-way street heading east from the development to Sublet, it's a narrow, short street. I've encountered many times going to work where people are coming up Wilson the wrong way. And that is hazard and I can see that happening even more with this development. People coming in from Shaw or Manchester and just doing a real quick cheating by turning on, on Wilson the wrong way to get to their unit. I could see that being a big problem. And it poses problems with the people that live on Wilson, not to mention that it's a one-way. Um, sewer drainage, uh, stormwater drainage would be a huge issue. We've seen our. Sewer lid fly up in the air doing heavy storms, just spinning in the air. So th- this is an old neighborhood that has really small sewer, you know, drainage, um, issues and that's just gonna add to it. Um, the unit size, yes, we've, I've heard from many different sources and on the news about the fifty-eight now suddenly turning to seventy-five. It's not a big site. I, I, I look at it now and I'm like, there's no way they're gonna get that many units without them looking squished and. Just like any random apartment. Why wouldn't anybody wanna pay that much for something so tiny? There's no way somebody's gonna grow a family in there. They're gonna be forced to move. And our concern is they're gonna turn into Airbnbs and I was told that wouldn't happen with an HOA. How can they really stop it? I'm afraid that people are gonna turn to renting them because the market takes a little dive and they won't be able to sell it for what they bought it for. There's just a lot of concerns there that, that we're gonna have to. As owners for a long time. My husband's family's been here since nineteen fifty-six. His father built this home. And so we're aware of, of a lot of the things that went on with that school. We watched it sit vacant for twenty years. But you, I won't re-go over what everybody already spoke of, but we are concerned and we would like the traffic start, study done. We'd like a. A storm drainage system study done. Um, we would really love to see these re, these units be reduced back to the fifty-eight townhomes. And provide adequate parking per unit for two cars. There's no way one person or two people have two, that don't have two cars. And, um, I mean, that's, I, I could add and keep talking, but people have already touched on a lot of these. Personally, I think this site is better suited commercial. I can see it being like a. A U-shaped sort of shopping area where there's a UPS store or, you know, a nail salon or hair salon, you know, barber shop or, you know, little tiny. Um, and, and yeah, that would cause some traffic issues I can see, but there's, there's other better uses for this land and I don't think residential is one of them. You have the storage place directly next door, which I look at every morning right now since the school is gone. There's a tool shop. There's all kinds of small little industrial, um. Businesses along there to the east and, and north and south. Um, I, I just really feel like this should not be. Approved until these studies are done and rethink the unit sizes. Um. It, it, right now, it's just not a good idea. Um, I also wanna add, and I'm sure you're aware, I am the one that submitted the petition, our community petition. Um, currently there's over four hundred signatures on it. Um, seventy-five percent of them are from the six-three-one-one-zero zip code as well as six-three-one-three-nine, which is just. You know, a little bit off the beaten path, not much. Um, still considered the hill. So we're getting a lot of support. As to being against this project. So I, I'd really like to see a re, a revision in this because it is better than having a vacant school behind us. We've. We've dealt with people, homeless people and things of that nature, which is sad. Um, so having a vacant is, or, you know, torn down has been nice. But I think it needs to be rethought. The whole design needs to be rethought before this is approved. And really, that's all I have to say. I'm not gonna re-go boat, back over what everybody else has already said.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you to all the speakers.
Thank you.
Um, just to make sure it gets into the record, there was a comment submitted online that talks about number of units and parking concerns. Okay, thank you. We need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, a second.
Previous role.
Any objections to previous role? That the hearing done, the public hearing is closed. Now we're ready for customer question, uh, customer information questions. Do you mind starting again?
Okay. Okay, I had a couple of questions. Um. One is about the, the fill. And this gentleman mentioned, I think Jeremy's ready, mentioned about the compaction of the soil. So usually these problems show up five, six years later and I mean, you mentioned that the HOA. Would have responsibility, but what, is there any mechanism to mitigate that? Does McBride, do they have any role in that? Wants the transfers of each property? What's standing behind the HOA when they, you know, just stood up? Um, to deal with any soil. Erosion problems or compact problems that show up.
So just understanding the question was, I know we're on the mic now, uh, the, about the fill. So I mean, obviously we have a structural engineer design. We have geotechnical design. We have our civil engineer design. So we'll know all the facts about how to design this. We'll hire a structural engineer. We use Mulhern and Coulter, widely regarded structural engineer to help us. That will get the peers to a suitable soils, support the grade beams above. Um, respect to warranty and HOA, I mean, we have a ten-year structural warning within any McBride home. Um, but I mean, it will be all designed upfront, um, to.
So the ten-year warranty will cover.
Any structural.
Or subsurface. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Alright. The other question I had is about the, uh, entry to the development. There are two entries, is that correct?
That is correct. There's January Street aligns to the right and then there's a secondary on the.
And they're pretty close together. So if two people are coming out at the same time, are they? Offset in any way? Are you, both cars lined up looking at each other and nobody can see the, one car can't see traffic?
Yeah, I think the one unique thing is January is a stopped sign intersection. So I think there's a, a, a mechanism already. On entry and exit of there while the entrance on the left is more fluid, obviously just there's no stop sign. But it's also aligning with the commercial on the other side. That's just an open parking lot, dumpsters. So I think having that stop sign on the right kind of solves the issue you're worried about of two people coming out at the same time. January is already a, a stop sign, um, roadway.
Well, I, I do know the street and I've been in this area at five o'clock. You don't wanna go there. Uh, because it's very busy. There's a lot of moving parts at five o'clock. We're really in the morning too, early in the morning. Cause there's a QT down on. On Hampton there and. It, it's gonna be challenging. I, I just think. A little concerned about that. I think it's gonna be very challenging in terms of traffic and circulation. Um, with the volume of cars added to that location. So those are my only questions.
Where do I go? So, uh. You, obviously there was a meeting in the neighborhood recently.
We've had multiple meetings with the neighborhood, yes.
That's what I was gonna ask, so, um.
Going back to. Early this year, like January, I think it was March actually was the, we met with the Hill Two Thousand group and then we've, we've had a town hall in the St. Ambrose and. Um, so yeah, we've had a lot of discussion with the neighbors.
Okay, so sitting here, we hear people that aren't happy about it. Is there a? Another side to the community response to that? Is there any level of support? Seems to me you s. You've met with them multiple times.
Yeah, there's general support. I would say that I think, um, I think our example of the other side development when parking's obviously was the most. Um, talked about negative comments tonight. Um, but I mean, when we did our townhouses on the other side of the hill, there was twenty-eight units. Those are just one-car garage townhouses. That not one person. Here is talking about traffic or density and I think this is an urban environment. I think that's. When, when we're coming and meeting with city staff, for example, well, the, the, the comprehensive plan wants five to eight-story. Buildings with less parking and then the residence one, two hundred parking spaces. So I think that's how we got the compromising of, to the city staff. To working with the city and then also with, um, the residents is getting that one-point-six number. We feel we're very confident that the parking will be self-contained. Within this development.
Right. Okay, and I assume there's some math behind your, uh, stormwater detention area?
Yes, we have him right here.
Yeah, I, I just, it's a sketch level. All I need to know is that there was some.
Yeah, so for the record, my name's George Stock. I'm with Stockton Associates Consulting Engineers. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. So Stockton Associates is land surveyors, um, professional civil engineers. So relative to the stormwater, we've had many discussions with the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District as well as MoDOT. Uh, MSD has suggested that we actually push more drainage to the north than what does today and we're happy to oblige. And MoDOT has given conceptual approval. So for some of the reasons and the surcharging in the system in Wil- Wilson Avenue, part of the site today is tributary to that. And they've asked us to move it to the north and then implement what we call channel protection, water quality, volume reduction, attenuation for two-year storms and hundred-year storms. So today there is no attenuation. It's parking lot, rooftop. So we'll be implementing best management practices to improve the conditions. Um, I, I'm not gonna say there's gonna be a wholesale improvement on the conditions of Wilson, but certainly the site, there'll be no adverse impact. There'll be no stormwater on any residential properties.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions, so bear with me. I'll try to get through some of these. You've asked a good question. I already knocked it off. Tell us, thank you. Um, I kinda wanna go back to the engagement with the neighborhood, um, something I kinda think, I hate asking this question because it shouldn't bear on these kind of developments, but it kinda does when you have this. Opposing, a lot of opposing opinions, um, but with the alderman or the neighborhood, were there no letters or anything like? Hey, these are the things that we want you to address and hey, we addressed this. Some documentation saying you worked with them. I know you've had meetings, but those kind of things kind of help, at least me.
Yeah, we've met with the alderman many, many times on this project, um, with city staff and especially, so we, we have worked with the alderman on. He was involved in many of the, the proposed changes that we. Enacted on this plan.
Yeah, I would ask that, you know, maybe in the future that person shows up or that we get some type of written documentation saying we're in support of this, because it, it really helps us. We hear a lot of no's, a lot of, you know. You know, from that category. So seeing, you know, we only have one letter of support. Um, so it kinda helps me kind of look out where the, uh, you know, pendulum swings on. Does the neighborhood like it or not? Um, kinda ancillary to my other questions. Um, we talked about parking already. With your other developments on the hill, you know, you said that the other ones have a one-car garage was. Providing garages underneath these, you know, providing a more city aesthetic for design not feasible in your layout. I think I've looked at this and I could see maybe. Was that a route that you kinda went down and said, oh, this doesn't work with what we need? Uh, kinda give me some feedback there about like, was it not constructable?
That, and that's where it really comes down to is constructability with all the issues we have with environmental, with this compaction and things like that. We have looked at this plan. Twenty-two different ways and this is truly the only feasible option to make this a residential development that we're confident in selling and moving forward with.
Okay, um. Uh, are you familiar with like visitability? It's like this term in design, like. I'm gonna bring it, I have a follow-up question. Visibility is the general idea of like, hey, I'm coming to visit your site. I'm a cousin or, uh, uncle. I'm gonna come park at your site. Hey, we wanna walk down to their dog park. On your current site plan, I know it's very high level, but I want this to kinda be a thing that you flush out during your design process. If I park on one spot, like say building, you can't see the numbers up here, say, I think this is seven or eleven down here. If I park here and I live here, how do I get to the dog park if I'm in a wheelchair? I have to walk or do I have to wheel down to Wilson to get to another sidewalk to get up to the other side?
There's inter sidewalks in, in our development.
Yeah, so, so I'm here.
Oh, yep.
I have to get down to the sidewalk, go over here and go up to the sidewalk. So something to kind of flush out. So something to kind of flush out, I know it's very high level on here, but that's, things like that, I think.
Yeah, we're open to looking at more inter pedestrian friendly for everybody.
Especially with the situation where we have parking in front of buildings and some, you know, say kids walking through here, running.
We do have accessible spots designed by here you and understand that, we can look into that.
Yep, something to think about. I may include like something to that sort in our recommendation if we go that route. Sorry, I'm going through my list, bear with me. Funding, I think that was covered in one of the attachments, this is all you guys, you're funding it, you're getting some type of leasing or, or not leasing, but financing outside, no public funds, no tax payment in it, none of that stuff.
Nope, 100% private development, fully funded by us.
Great, great. We've talked about the street trees, you guys are going to do that, the tree lawn between the roadway on Wilson, tree lawn sidewalk, that's something I think is needed. I'm happy you guys are on board with that, it keeps that residential feel going down the road.
Yep.
Across the street, it is industrial, it's kind of a, okay, like, all right, but I think that's something that would need to keep going with here. I think the two things, these are going to be kind of recommendations I have for the commission, but I'll address them here. I think fencing, screening, landscaping, that needs to be flushed out during your final design process. I think some of the neighbors on Bear Court may like some fencing, something to kind of, you know, not be peered upon by the neighbors. I think on the west side, you know, those people that stay in those units may not want to just stare at a white wall. So things like that, maybe flush that out. I think some things that the staff brought up as far as how kind of tight this is may bring up issues when you get to that point. I think in some of these, I think there's 10 foot between the property line and the buildings. I think that's really small. It's, it's something that I kind of, when I saw this plan, it gives me a little worry. Just with like who wants to have that, not saying everybody wants a yard, but it's something to think about. Just thinking about issues that I see about the general layout. And then lastly, sorry, lost my spot. Oh, it was just, just talking about the, you know, amenities, I think they need to be available for everybody on this site. I know you have a dog park and a pavilion. Again, going back to that kind of visitability thing, kind of think about somebody in building one trying to get over to another building, it's interconnected ability, being able to walk. You know, if you're marketing this to young professionals, they're usually active. So kind of keep that thing in, those things in mind. I do have an issue with the parking, I know a lot of people on this board, some go towards, I don't need a parking spot, some goes to, well, there's two of us in this household, we both have a car. I think that's a tough thing to kind of decide on the spot. I think the 1.6 and supported by CBB is good. I think it's going to be an issue either way. I do think that we need, I know this, I was looking at pictures the other day of Wilson Avenue, sorry to take up a lot of time. Wilson Avenue, there were no parking signs on Wilson Avenue, they're gone now for some reason. Maybe, I don't know. Kids taking them down, I think those signs need to go back up. And we need to make sure there's no parking there, I think the neighbors are going to be upset on Wilson Ave, east of you, because you might have parking issues, but sorry, covered a lot there, but I think less questions, more like insight, things that I'll be recommending to be in this kind of plan if we approve it, as recommendations to include. Sorry.
Appreciate the feedback and we hear your concerns on the inter, the visibility.
My turn, all right, here we go. First of all, I want to start with some of the good things that I heard. I want to personally say that, you know, a developer living in the neighborhood willing to invest all this time and effort to develop in their own neighborhood in the city, truly a great thing, so I want to applaud you for that. Wish we had more folks like that doing that type of work in the city. And, you know, based on what you've told us in your presentation, I can certainly understand the myriad of challenges that come along with a site like this. It is a tough, tough site to develop, both just with the remediation issues and the, you know, surrounding land uses, so I, I do appreciate that. You know, as, as an architect, I appreciate that. Also, as an architect, I, 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 the site plan, in my opinion, is just, is not good. For a lot of the reasons that, that have been discussed here today. First of all, a question for staff, it was mentioned in the public hearing that there was a petition. And I don't recall hearing anything about a petition or seeing a petition.
Yeah, it was also, I did not have any previous knowledge about a petition that was circulating about this project in particular.
Okay, guess that never got submitted. To help aid in our conversation, I'm going to be, sorry, getting known for this, but I have some handouts for, for the team. And if folks are interested in the audience to look at, look at this, I think this was shared with the development team before this presentation, so feel free to grab a copy. If you're unfamiliar, there is a typo on, on one of the pages, we'll get into that. There are two main things I want to talk about though, as it relates to the site plan, because some of us on the commission were, you know, had seen the previous plan and had discussions with city staff about ways we could make this feel a little bit more urban, a little better integrated into the neighborhood, deal with some of those issues like street alignments and things facing Wilson and green space and all that, that fun stuff, so. The first thing that I would like to sort of get your thoughts on, because I've heard this a lot from the development team is of not feasible. But I think this really needs to have, for the units facing along Wilson Avenue, those units need to face Wilson Avenue. And I get the argument of, yes, they're going to be looking at an industrial property across the street. That's a condition that's pretty common around the city. Especially in the Hill neighborhood too. I think it's more important to build this with the aims of creating a nice walkable neighborhood in the future, should that industrial property go away, get redeveloped. Then the more short-sighted argument of sale of, of being able to look at, you know, something across the street. So I'm curious on your opinion on why that is not feasible.
Yeah, just from marketability and our, and us building houses and selling houses every day, that when you, that is an active industrial site. And we, we do not think that buyers will want to face an industrial site with dumpsters right across the way and traffic and noise and the box trucks going in front of their front door. When you can flip the unit's interior and look at your neighbors and your front door and have that connectivity down your street and the neighborhood you're in and the HOA you're in, and have that sidewalk all connect in the U that we're proposing here, that it really became down to being able to sell these houses and these houses will be $300,000 plus. I mean, there'll be some over fours for sure, I mean, with the options we can provide in the interior. So I mean, that, I think that's when we do our market research and when we look at our project, we want this project to be successful, obviously, and that's, that's how we came to that, that point.
Gotcha, so your argument is more on the marketability side, physically, site plan wise, there's nothing that would prevent you from doing that?
Uh, we, we've looked at it and, I mean, we can go, we don't need to go through the exact details, but this is the best path that we, we proceed with.
Unless I can get a little bit more detail, you're talking to architects and engineers here and, and other planners, I, you know, not necessarily buying the not feasible art, marketability.
Yeah, I mean, you might be losing use accounts and this 78 is our baseline of, does this project work or not? And I'm being honest about that number, we've, we already cut two in this process and that 78 line is, is, do we move forward or not?
Gotcha, so the handout that I gave to commissioners and other folks here does include 78 units with those, those units facing along Wilson facing units or facing the street. It does change the parking and internal sort of circulation route to be more of a oval with one in and out at January Drive. Which I think from a traffic standpoint, might make more sense than having two in and outs, being able to come out at a potentially signed intersection. So I'd be curious on getting your thoughts on potentially changing the design to have only one in and out to help address traffic concerns.
But then, I think the flip side is, I mean, working with our engineering team and land would be the emergency access to the U shape is much more favorable to get in and out to access points if somebody had an incident back corner and there's a car in the one, one lane, there's a second path. I mean, that's very typical when we're looking at a residential design that two access points. Typically when we get into the emergency services and things like that, that's, that's where they're going to push back and say you need to have two access points typically to get to the same spot.
Okay. Can you clarify on, on this plan that we're looking at on screen, there's the orange boxes and then there's this gray bar right in front of them. What, what is that representing there? Is that a porch, a garden?
Front patio, just a place to enjoy an outdoor space that you're on. We, on the very front rendering, you can see there's a, a low fence kind of boxing in your, your porch and patio. You could put your chairs out there, table and enjoy a communal space with your neighbors.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah, I think the renderings that you showed, they look nice. I think your product that you have built elsewhere in the neighborhood is a nice product townhome wise. The one thing that those have that these do not is a front yard. Essentially, you know, you have parking sidewalk three, four feet of lawn before you get to this, this patio. So you're, you know, you're parking right at your, your front door. And it is a lot of hardscape.
And we can make this, I mean, we do options, we can make the patio option for the buyer too. Some people do prefer hardscape and some people do prefer grass, so that's something we'd be willing to look into is that, that porch we viewed as a benefit of a feature, but if green space was, we can let the buyers pick, that's something we do.
I think that would, I mean, just in general, that was a big thing, like I was trying to figure out ways that you could get maybe a tree, an internal tree lawn around this parking, but just, it's tight, it's not what you have here.
It's a tough site.
It is a tough site. The the notions that it was supposedly 58 units before 78, could you mind addressing that?
Those numbers never came from McBride.
Okay.
McBride has never said 58, there was a Fox Two article, the head quotes from others outside, but our plan has never had 58, we never shown anybody a plan before, except the one before we aligned January, the one that we met with staff, that's the first public plan that we took out when we submitted for zoning. So anything from that is just not factual.
Have you explored with MSD at all? I mean, because the site is so tight and limited and we have this stormwater requirement to drain, to drain to the north, obviously that's prime real estate that could potentially be used for community space or, or green space. Have you explored potential ways to maybe make that a little bit more usable as not just a EMP or detention pond and maybe make that more of a usable green space, either by trying to reduce that with permeable paving or, or doing some other strategies there?
I'll let our engineer describe it.
I think that, you know, we're being held to a pretty high standard in the redevelopment of the property, so it's, it's a back to grass condition. If you're an architect, you're practicing, you understand that, so we're not getting any credit for the rooftops and pavement that's there. They're saying, hey, take it back, mimic the original hydrology when it was a grass field. And so when you do that, and you have to attenuate and you have to hold that channel protection, that one inch, you got to hold it for 24 hours. It's what sizes the basin, not just the two, the hundred year storm, it's that channel protection. And that, that's what's important, that's what's really implemented, and that's what really improves the downstream condition. Those are those erosive velocity, those high intensity, short duration storms that we get, those cloud bursts, or I call them a frog choker, frog choker. Rain so hard, so fast frogs can't get out of the way. That is why that basin is the size and tucked up there into that corner and utilizing the culvert under 44 to convey the water. Whereas I mentioned that part of the southern portion of the site drains out into Wilson. But, but the, the standard, making the parking spaces permeable will have a negligible impact for what we have to store. And so that's why it's the nestled rain garden, so it'll be planted, I mean aesthetically, it'll be a rain garden, a large rain garden. And we need that space, so I mean, we need every square inch, I just saw your plan, which it's a nice plan, I understand, you know, what you were doing, the logic. But I think it takes away what we need, so we even had that retaining wall there, you know, because generally the site's flat. But that retaining wall transitions down to the topography down along 44 and then we build a berm on the backside. But really what we're up against, you know, you're not going to put green roofs here, you know. You know, as Jake said, 25% of the site is already green, you know, we're really using three acres. But I think the strategy we have is one that addresses the concerns, it's, it's in alignment with MSD, it's in alignment with MoDOT.
Gotcha, thank you for that.
Jake, one, one question, um, did you, has MSD had a conceptual review of this?
They have, yeah, that's where we got the criteria.
Gotcha, and did you guys explore like underground detention at all? Was that like just not feasible because of cost or?
Yeah, it's, it's one that MSD does not like on residential developments, you know, they pretty much prohibit it. It's, it's an application we use in commercial, you don't see it very often in, in the residential. Residential is the bio retention basins.
Great, thank you. Two last comments, I do appreciate the willingness to extend the street lawn along Wilson Avenue, I think that's needed and would be a good feature. To me also personally, the, the 1.6 parking ratio doesn't bother me, you know, I'm, I'm one of those folks with a partner that we share one, one car. So we exist, we're out there, more numerous than folks might think. So I, I, I don't think that should necessarily inhibit, in fact, you know, I think the right balance needs to be struck between green space, tree lawn, parking, that's a tough balance. But I will say overall, you know, my two, my main thing is the buildings fronting Wilson and, and without that, I don't think I'll be able to support this, so. I will pass that along, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of questions, so I just want to be very clear about this, so this retention basin is engineered and sized properly?
Yes, sir.
And it's approved by MSD?
Well, we haven't gone through.
So what we do at this stage is we, we communicate with MSD, we make what's it called, the conceptual review, we write them a check, we make it. They come back with a letter, they give us the criteria, and that's where we got the criteria to redirect some of the stormwater north and that got us dialoguing with MoDOT. So what we have is conceptual approvals from both MoDOT and MSD. We get through the next process of this, hopefully have a recommendation or approval, we advance the plan, and then we make formal submissions to MSD for permit documents. But this is engineered around that letter, conceptual letter we have from them.
So respond to the comment of when the water overflows on I-44.
Yeah, I, that's not going to happen, you know, that's, that's, I, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to say that doesn't, I think what happened at Forest Park is the inlets got clogged, you know, some of that's a maintenance issue where the great inlets in the median get clogged, and so you see the MoDOT personnel out there grabbing the grass and the water goes down. There are some highways that are below 44 out to the west in Fenton, you know, there's I-70 in St. Peters. But this condition here, the culvert's adequately sized under 44 to be able to take our flow attenuated through the basin. So we don't foresee water going over the basin or onto adjoining properties.
Next one, um, let's talk a little bit about this surveying dispute or this surveying bust that I heard about with a survey of a fence of the existing property owner versus the survey of the property itself. Obviously, you're performing the surveys for this property, right?
That's right, we did an ALTA survey on this property, I don't know, five, six years ago when Glendale Chrysler, I think that's, that was, was Glendale Chrysler. So we did an ALTA survey there and so we picked up topography, picked up people's fences. And then in '23, on behalf of McBride, we did an update. And, and what I heard, I learned this two days ago, that there was two residents that were complaining that there were some discrepancies between their plot surveys on their lot, which I call boundary and location improvement versus our ALTA. And when we do an ALTA of four acres, we locate monumentation on everybody's property line, not just the one lot. We go up and down the right away and we reestablish the boundary. I think one of the discrepancies which admit is somebody moved the shed. And we sent survey crew out there this morning, I got pictures, we got the shed. The shed's in a little different location, and I think that's what one of the property owners was contesting, my shed's not there, I moved it, and that is true. I don't know when they moved it, but it's different. And then there's, there's fences, you know, whose fence, they're a little bit askew, they, you know, it's not uncommon that different surveyors disagree, but I haven't engaged with any other surveyors, I've been given a But I haven't engaged with any of the surveyors. I've been given a very blurry survey to look at that was done by somebody and I've got another clear one. I don't see the big discrepancies. We'll have open engagement, but there's no bust. There's no, there's no property lines wrong, you know, to disqualify this plan. That is not the case. I mean, I hear that, but you know, we will work that out with those property owners. You know, we're happy to talk to them. We're happy to talk to their surveyors. In fact, one surveyor's office right behind me. You know, I noticed that on there. But I don't think there's, I don't see any discrepancy between what they show and what we show. I think it's one of the lots a little bit further up in the middle. There's a new, new fence and a new shed and they're a little bit different location than one of our older Alta surveys. But they moved it. So they actually physically moved. It's not, there's something wrong with the survey.
Theoretically, before they build the fence, they have to have a licensed surveyor survey.
Correct.
And then it's spotted and it's inspected via permit. So if there is some type of bust, you're committed to work through that with the property owner.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
You know, none of this stuff of if my fence falls down, I mean, we need to have a cooperative effort here.
We, we would absolutely have a cooperative effort. Sometimes what happens is us as surveyors, they say, whose fence is it? Well, we don't know who put the fence up. So we, we don't know who owns the fence. We can just tell you where the fence is, you know? And in some of these cases, some of them meander the property line. They go back and forth a little bit. And then it might be a garden wall about this tall. That's kind of over the property line one way or another. We'll work that out. But there's not a wholesale failure of a survey to make this, disqualify this plan that it's not accurate. It's done by a professional licensed surveyor. It's reviewed by a title commitment, our title company along with the title commitment. So we're confident in it and. And again, I just learned of this two days ago and so, or three days ago, immediately I asked for the surveys. We still have a blurry one of a neighbor. We'll hopefully get a crisp one. But that neighbor, we went out there and we resurveyed today and we did find a new fence, brand new vinyl fence and a new shed. In a little different location than it was that we had previously located.
Sir, just refresh me from the back of the building to the property line. How big is that?
I think it's twenty, I can't, I think there's, excuse me, let me grab a drawing. Be right back. Yeah, I was gonna say twenty-seven, twenty-seven, there's twenty-seven to twenty-eight feet from that east property line to the back of the homes. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Were you, were you saying from the back of the property, that twenty-seven feet to?
From the east line or the right line?
Yeah.
To the, to the east wall of the residential homes. The cursor's on that east wall of the residential homes to the east property line is twenty-seven, twenty-seven to twenty-eight feet.
All right. And just one, oh, I'm sorry. On the survey and working with the neighbors, it's very common. Obviously in the city of St. Louis, that if there's a fence that's fifty years old, it's very common in a new development where we'll grant them an easement. That they can have their fence there. And in this project, it works because we have common ground. That's the HOA. So that we can grant an easement to these buyers to keep their fence, the low garden wall that's just a few inches over the property line. It's, it will all stay and we'll work it out. Just for that reassurance for you.
All right. I have a few questions. First, going back to this, this traffic issue. I can't recall if I heard it, but I'm going to ask, did you all do your own assessment or study of traffic and draw some conclusions as you were?
We did not do a formal traffic study. I mean, I think the issue that we have heard is about Hampton and Wilson. And that's just not something in our scope to fix. You know, that's just not, that's just not in our scope.
Okay. Well, whoever can speak to it, what are the possibilities of turning Hampton in, or Hampton and Wilson into a right in, right out only street? It is already? Yeah. Oh, she, she spoke to people turning on left.
I mean Hampton's a major intersection.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, there's got, there's a.
Is a problem, for sure. Where you said people turn left off of Hampton onto Wilson. Left. Oh, okay. Okay.
There is a lane that you can turn and avoid the traffic light if you're going right from Wilson to Hampton. But if you have a car that is turning left, you have a red light, everybody gets backed up. So to this point, no, I'm not asking him to fix the intersection. But the additional traffic and congestion that this project would add, it's not going to make that intersection any easier. When it's already stressed personally beyond capacity, if not just add.
So, so there is a left onto Hampton. There is no left onto Wilson.
There's left onto both. You can go Wilson.
You go right or left on both?
On all of them.
Okay.
You can get anywhere. But I just want to address this, this Hampton issue. I mean, it was obviously voiced by the residents of the hill in our last meeting specifically about the Hampton and Wilson. And the aldermen spoke up and said, we are, send your concerns into the, the right department of, of, and let me know and go fight. And help fix this. You know, it's a bigger community than this, this development.
Seems like something worth discussing. I'll say that. And if I understand it correctly, coming up sublet, you cannot turn onto Wilson because it's one way, right?
Wilson is one way going east.
Right. Okay. I was curious, just, I don't know if anyone has this answer, but if, if there've ever been any discussions within the community about. Desireed uses of this site, potential uses of this site after the school was demolished. Just would like to hear more about that.
Fact is, as I mentioned in my presentation, there were two other businesses that attempted to purchase that land to put in. Besides, besides the automobile dealership, there were two other companies that tried to purchase that lease. And for whatever reason, they were, they were not allowed to purchase it, which made no sense to anybody. Because these are, these are companies that you're probably using their product as you.
Okay.
Following the failed attempt of Chrysler, one of the things that came out of the discussion amongst the immediate neighbors was. The feasibility of putting some kind of a community home. Because as we know.
Say, community home? Oh, gotcha.
They now bought the house from their parents, but they can't keep their parents in that house anymore. So the thought was if we could have some kind of an assisted care that was local, that was run by the hill from the hill of the hill. That could be a need that we all have and will continue to have as population agents. So that one was discussed. It never went anywhere, but it was something that a lot of community members had posed as an option. I like the idea of racing of the shopping center. A lot of smaller units in there.
You're really gonna have a traffic issue then, but. Yeah.
Something that is not as stressful as this many happens.
Okay. Yeah. Going back to this fifty-eight units. So it sounds like it was made up or someone found it somewhere. I'm just curious. I'm just curious. Yeah, I, I read it, but he didn't say it didn't exist.
I can.
Did you all try to?
The fifty-eight number, we did fifty-eight single family homes on the other side of the hill. And I think that's the number where it came from is the fifty-eight. It was spoken by the alderman, the former alderman, not the current one that worked with us on the lock cleaner project. I think it's just a. A mix up of numbers and it is nothing. We, we never said that number, yeah.
So if I understand correctly, the seventy-eight units is due to financial constraints. In order to make the project pencil, you. Have to squeeze seventy-eight units into the site.
When you factor in environmental, the compaction, the extra foundation costs, the large detention basin we build and everything about this site. That is, that is the density needed to make this a residential site.
Okay. I think all the other questions were answered. I'm at the end of the line. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of my questions have been sort of asked already. I also have had the opportunity to talk to Alderman Devote about the project and he was pretty clear with me that he does support it. I do wish that we, that I could see the petition that was, that was had.
The people online can't hear whatever is being said in the background.
There's someone that is just a, a resident who spoke previously. She's just in the audience and she's just notifying us that. The person who has the petition is saying that they sent it to President Green, the zoning administrator, the community. And someone at Community Development Administration as well. And I was, and Alderman Devote. And I was just saying that I wish that I could see that petition, because it's not in front of us. But I'm definitely curious when I hear the number four hundred, that sounds pretty large, like an amount of opposition. Yes, Steph, that'll be great.
Uh, the planning commission has a email address. I would suggest to be sent there.
I guess my larger questions, you know, I do see that you, you guys have adjusted for the one point six parking. You said you weren't aware of any of the property line issues or any of those concerns?
We were, we, we was addressed last Wednesday. It was the first time we've really heard of them in a formal setting and then they've reached out directly as well. Within this, but I mean, it's, it's a very common thing. We had George go out and make sure we double check because like we said, the shed moved and. We're talking about inches of property line on a, this site's old, the houses are in the fifties. So it's just old and typically we just grant an easement from our property that allows them to keep up all their fence. There's a garden, low wall, so that'll all be kept up.
Okay. I think all my other questions have been asked already. So thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the commissioners who are online, I believe Commissioner Coen, I'm sorry, Alderman Coen.
Thank you. I, most of my questions have been, you know, asked at this point in time, but. You know, I do, you know, share, you know, my. You know, thoughts with Commissioner Benton and. I think it might've been Commissioner Miller with respect to the recommendations. So I, you know, and I, I too would also, you know, appreciate being able to see this, you know, petition that's being circulated. I know that these types of, you know, projects, you know, take a lot of, you know, time, effort, money to even get to this point. So certainly, you know, appreciate, you know, Mr. Eilerman and company for, you know, their interest in investing in the neighborhood and in our city. You know, one of the things that. Struggle with, you know, you know, certainly as the retention pond, I do think that putting some, you know, a tree partition along the eastern side of it is. You know, a good recommendation to, you know, add to whatever this, you know, body wants to propose. But, you know, the, the HOA has been mentioned a couple of times and I'm not sure. How, how much is the HOA? Do we know how much their, you know, monthly or annual fee is going to be at this point?
Um, to answer that question, we don't know the exact dollar amounts. I mean, the HOA involves lawn maintenance, sometimes snow removal. Vegetation upkeep, but it also requires, it also is the insurance for the exterior of these units. And obviously insurance costs, we need to get a quote on seventy-eight units. It, it will be a market rate. I mean, some are, we have communities that are. Hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty a month, some are three fifty to six hundred. And it just depends on when we get those final numbers closer to when we would open for sales for that. Factual information and it's part of the disclosure the day they sign the contract. It's all upfront information that the, that the buyers are aware of.
And I presume that they're also going to be responsible for any maintenance of the, you know, street, streetlights, refuse or well. How is, I didn't see anything for like dumpsters on the, the site or, you know, is this going to be rollout carts? That the city's going to be responsible for picking up? You know, how, how are those types of services being handled? Is that through the HOA or is that?
We, we have dumpsters, like for the trash example, we have dumpsters in between units that are tucked back away from the street. That, so it will be same with our lock cleaner townhouse. It is a dumpster with a, a screen that the. The garbage truck backs up off the, the units there and picks them up in between.
So where, where is that? On, I didn't, I saw a pavilion, I saw a grill, I saw a park, park at.
If you can see where his mouse is right now, there's one there, there's one to the right and I. And there's one to the north. Between nineteen and twenty.
So, okay, there's three, all right. Wow, that, that's, it's a really tight site. You know, a, a density is good, but you know, I, I do share the concerns with, you know, the overall, you know, kind of aesthetic. I think the, you know, design of the buildings and townhomes are, are great, but, you know, just in terms of. I don't know if I would want to live in a house that fronts a parking lot, basically. I, I'm, I'm just kind of astounded that someone would pay three hundred dollars for that, or three hundred thousand dollars for that. But, I mean, you guys know your market certainly, you know, you've been doing this for years, but. I just, I would hope that, you know, we're also talking about, you know, I think someone mentioned like the pervious concrete. You know, for sidewalks and, you know, the streets, you know, certainly. You know, the HOA, I, I would imagine is still going to have to pay for lights and streets and repairs to them at some point in time. So are those costs also being incorporated, not just the insurance and other things?
Correct. There's a total full budget. We do this, there's, we have private street communities in other areas. It's a full planned budget. Ahead of time. This is all in there. There's HOA board members. I mean, there's, we'll start with being the three and then as there's fifty percent closeout, we bring on a resident, ninety percent a resident and then a hundred percent a resident. So there will be three resident board members that take that on after us. We teach them, that's why we do the three step is to teach them how to manage. An HOA and from there they, they know how to do it. They know the budget's there. They know that they have a management company they work with. They're not the ones actually calling. They call the management company to handle services like that. So.
Okay. All right. I think that's really everything that I had for the moment. I, I also had a conversation with Alderman Devote earlier today. He expressed his support for the project as well. He was very clear about that in terms of his support for the project, just to reiterate that as well.
I also think, and just one last comment on that is in this, when the staff was talking about this PUD sketch, right? This is a time where this is, this is different than probably a different zoning type, or this is the sketch plan where we've heard the concerns about visibility. This traffic example, when we're talking about some specific details versus the overall scope of the project, where this would give us time to work with staff. To get to that development plan and then we would come back here as well. So I just want to remind people of the PUD plan is this is a sketch. Plan to work through some of these concerns we've heard. So I just, I think that's important for where we are in the step in the process.
Okay, Commissioner Garmendia, are you still with us?
Are you guys still with us? Um, no, I'm here. And I, I will keep my comments brief. I also made a point to, to speak to Alderman Devote to understand his position on this development. Our offices is generally in support of projects that offer density. And I think this is an example of a diversity of housing types. So of course there's going to be challenges with implementing it. And I've heard that the hill is full. The hill is popular and I do believe that the, you know, there, there is a market for even. A low car household lifestyle in the hill. So I don't, I don't share some of the concerns. So I don't, I don't share some of the concerns that I've heard tonight about whether there's a market for this type of development, there is undoubtedly is, but that's a testament to the hill and its residents and the, and the neighborhood culture they've created, so I, I trust that there will be a traffic study and I'm sure Alderman Devotee will be a dedicated partner in making sure that, I think with more residents, this street will get the attention it deserves in terms of street safety and that traffic study will be a priority, so thank you all for your, both residents who've come out to testify. I will read that petition once I get my hands on it as well. And to the developer who answered a lot of questions about the project and the planning staff that provided the presentation, so thank you all for your efforts to educate the Planning Commission on kind of the complexity of, of making the site feasible for residential development, so thank you.
There is no plan for a traffic study though, am I correct?
To, to address what issue specifically, I guess would be my question.
I think the intersection of Wilson and Hampton.
Is that a parallel effort or is that?
I don't think that's a purview of the developer.
I don't, yeah.
Well, we're not saying it is, we're just.
You were, you just mentioned like you, you was said that.
It sounds like there needs to be one for the neighborhood to be more in support of this, that seemed to be a major barrier, but, but that's not necessarily within the scope of the developers' PUD.
Anything else, Commissioner Garmendia?
That's all from me.
Okay, Commissioner Jorgensen, are you with us? He said he was going to join online. Commissioner Jorgensen? I'm sure he'll speak up if he has a question after we've moved on.
Okay, and so my only question is about the traffic study.
Do we have a role in requesting another study? I just don't know enough about the process and that's a question I think we're staying.
I'm coming up short myself with kind of a specific
Well, I don't feel so bad.
Pathway in terms of like the Planning Commission's role in making that happen. It's something we can discuss and provide an update to the commission to figure out what the options are.
It is a street I'm very, or an intersection, I'm very familiar with, I spent 12 years at the storage facility next door, so I know both coming and going, it can be a real challenge.
Technology wise, I think we just unmuted the Commissioner.
Is it true?
Yes.
We can hear you. Your turn.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much, sorry about that. I had to leave to get my, my daughter and then put her to bed, so I'm sorry if I missed anything. If I make something up again that's been discussed, but do you know the estimated number of residents that we expect here?
Coming to the stand to respond.
The question being how many residents will live in these units? I mean, we can't, obviously factually tell you that, but our townhome development with one car garage on the hill, it's, it's a mix of ones and twos, you know, I mean, that's just the honest answer, there's, there are people that live with one car, there's two people that live with one car, there's, it's a dense area where you can get around and use it, so. I don't know.
So ballpark would be 128.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah, but how many cars, we don't know either, yeah, it's people versus car and traffic, so.
Okay, and do you have an estimated tax revenue?
I don't think so. Oh, you do?
Okay.
Oh, you don't, okay, no.
We do not have an estimated tax revenue of this project.
All right, thank you. I would just note, I think, I think those are my questions, so thank you. But I would just note, some of you may have noticed recently in the media, there's been some coverage about increasing rents and the affordability crisis being very real here in St. Louis and also separately how difficult it is to build in St. Louis compared to the rest of our region. I think those are important things to keep in mind as we discuss this. And obviously the city is working to fix those issues through things like the zoning upgrade, for example, but I do think it's important to remember that we on the commission have a responsibility and that what we do on items like this one does matter for those specific issues. So I think if we were to stop 78 homes from being built because we want something like more homes to face the street, that, that has very real consequences that I don't think, I don't think that's the right balance to strike to make such a demand that could get in the way of this project when, when we're talking about that many homes in a neighborhood that by the way, has lost population since the turn of the century. I think that's worth noting also as we discuss the traffic issues that the population has declined in the last 25 years in that neighborhood. If we don't turn around, the population decline there and in the city at large, which of course we know the population has been declining for 70 years. How are we going to pay for public safety, infrastructure, services and 20 years from now, I really don't know. I think that's a key issue and I would be very hesitant to put too stringent requirements on a project like this. I agree, this isn't perfect, I, I understand the concerns. And I think there's always a downside to building new things, but if we can't say yes to a housing project like this one, I, I don't know what we can say yes to, we're going to solve these problems. In terms of who wants to buy these kinds of homes, I, I understand what the owner was saying, I, I don't think I would either. I, I live in Clifton Heights, which is a neighborhood next to the hill. Very close to my house, the series of townhomes were built in the last year. And I think they're quite ugly to be honest, even though I like townhomes in general. And I would never buy them, but they're selling for $450,000 and I was shocked when I saw them listed for that, but they're selling. So I, I wouldn't get into speculating too much about what can sell. And I agree with Commissioner Garmendia's comments about the parking, again, I think that there is a market for these things with, with people who may not demand the same kind of parking that some of us would, but, but some of these young people in particular probably have a different kind of lifestyle, want to live on the hill, which is a nice and walkable neighborhood. So overall, very supportive of this project, even though I understand the concerns, but I, I think it's important that we can move forward with something like this. Thanks.
All right.
So Madam Chairman, I think you've, all the Commissioners have been able to answer, ask their questions. It might be helpful at this time for Miriam, because we don't do PUDs all that frequently to give us some general knowledge and reminder of what's happening at this stage called the sketch plan. That it would proceed from us to the Board of Alderman and then there's another stage where we would, where we staff would see it again. If you'd outline that and outline the, the two paths, obviously we could make some recommendations of tweaking things, but also the two paths to the Board of Alderman.
Yeah, Dawn described it, right, that after this, whether the recommendation is positive, negative, or positive with conditions that seem achievable, the board bill can be introduced at the Board of Alderman, there's actually a clock on planned unit development review which we are passed, which, you know, was at the applicant's request, so that, that's why kind of we're still discussing it now. After an ordinance passes, it comes back for that development plan review, that would include all of that additional detail, elevations and just much more detailed information about the actual plan. That is reviewed by the Planning Commission as James described for consistency with the sketch plan as passed by ordinance. And that requires approval before a building permit can be granted. Happy to answer questions of course about the kind of procedure.
Simple start is that a motion of approval or going forward goes to the Board of Alderman, if we don't approve it, it still goes to the Board of Alderman.
It can, yes, it can be introduced, as with any item, a negative recommendation would raise the threshold for votes required at the board for an ordinance to pass.
And then there's middle zones about conditions and things like that.
Right.
So at this stage, we need a motion.
Before we, I have one question. Jake might have some conditions, I think I have conditions that I would like to add to this. If we, if someone makes a motion. Do you want to flush us out or just add them? Should we make the motion, add my own or? Sorry, just to, I mean, I'll just say the, the, the conditions that I would want would be all buildings fronting Wilson to face Wilson, which sounds like it might be untenable to the developer.
And to some of the Commissioners.
And to maybe some of the other Commissioners, but they'd be welcome to vote no on that. So, I mean, we could add it and vote and see how it rolls out unless they say, don't bother.
Let me ask a question, Miriam, of the process you just outlined. So if we have recommendations that are attached, the Board of Alderman still can amend that bill if we send it over with recommendations. They can amend, do everything they want, right? When it comes back to us, can we can vote no? And the Board of Alderman still can approve it ultimately, the PUD.
Well, after the sketch plan is approved by ordinance, the Board of Alderman won't see it again. The development plan approval is in the more detailed plan, that is required before a building permit can be issued. At that stage, the review might be a good opportunity to kind of revisit some of the more detailed items, like for example, visitability that came up tonight. But the kind of sole criteria for that review is like, does it conform to the sketch plan as adopted by ordinance?
Does it conform, okay.
Correct, and also Mary and Evan are, I believe, still online with us. If either of you have more to add about the process, you know, Mary, you've, you've seen more of these PUDs, so feel free to jump in and correct or add. And Mary, feel free to, or Evan, jump in, but there was a question asked from somebody in the audience about when would the zoning change? So the PUD, if adopted by ordinance, would in effect change the zoning from K to something that would allow for this project and, and not allow for the uses allowed under K. Oh, that, that's correct, yeah, the pathway to get to an adopted ordinance is by introduction of a board bill at the Board of Alderman, that legislative process and then the zoning allowance doesn't, or permissions don't actually change until that board bill becomes an ordinance.
That's correct.
So, are there any other conditions that we want to discuss being added?
Yes.
Yeah, so two things come to my mind. We were brought, it was brought to our attention tonight, there's some lengthy petition against us, which none of us have seen, right? So that concerns me. And then the conversation of the traffic. And the only way to figure out whether that is or isn't a problem is a traffic study. So it seems to me like we could get to the bottom line on both of these things if we ask for them.
Maybe it's a condition, I don't know.
Are you had other conditions in the pan?
Yeah, my, my two conditions, I could type these out later, but provide additional detail and design on landscaping, screening, fencing on the site in between the development and adjacent properties, sorry, mom wanted. And then the second one was provide additional detail on visitability, also the interconnectivity of the site, walkability on the site. Those are my two that I really would like to add, I don't think they would ruffle any feathers here.
Let me, let me read the ones that I'm hearing so far. All bid, all buildings fronting Wilson.
Not all buildings.
No, sorry, all, all buildings on Wilson front
Yes.
to Wilson, thank you. That there be further investigation of visitability, inter, interconnectivity within the site, that the petition that has been circulated in the neighborhood be provided to the commission, that a traffic study is conducted and that additional detail be provided on screening and landscaping. And that is to be provided at the
At the design develop?
Design development stage.
Richard, are you okay with that? Is it the next stage, like him?
But before we move forward with that, I'd like to know if that's even worthwhile from the developer's perspective or if.
Before we ask them, do we need to make sure we're all in agreement that that's what we're asking for?
I would vote no on this particular motion, it's a little too complicated for me.
Agreed.
They've, they've, in the past, there have been conditions attached with these PUDs and they're, I mean, it's not, it's not unheard of.
Can, can you help me, Commissioners Garmendia and Jorgensen? Which of these five issues are concerning or which would you support? Can you help me with that? So it's.
I would support, I would support a motion with the traffic study requirement. That's about it, yeah.
I, I would, I want to push back a little bit and say that the additional detail on screening and landscaping and the visibility, interconnectivity would not occur until the next stage, so it's not that we're saying yeah, we're not, we're not saying we're not approving until you give that, we're saying that that's going to be a requirement at the next stage.
I can picture there might be a category of things where maybe it doesn't have bearing on the sketch plan itself, but it's clear communication to staff and the applicant that we are to make it a priority in, you know, refinement or, you know, creation of the development plan. That's how I heard the visibility discussion earlier, you know.
Well, and we don't all have to agree on the same conditions. Commissioners are welcome to vote no if they don't agree on the motion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to the point where we have a motion that we can agree on.
Could, could I ask you a couple of questions on this?
Yes, please.
Who would be responsible for conducting this traffic study?
Could be the study.
We're, we're all looking a little confused on that.
I mean, it could, it could be the developer too, I mean, the engineer that would provide that traffic study would be on by, it's, it's a
I guess I'm trying to figure out what the traffic.
Developers to do traffic studies all the time.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what we're going to get out of a traffic study. If the intersection at Wilson and Hampton is an issue, it's still going to be an issue and.
But we'll move faster into fixing it, is my thinking.
Okay.
Because right now, we're just saying, let's add a lot of different traffic and see how bad it gets.
Well, I had a concern about the, the circulation coming out of the development itself, going east and west, how are these people going to do that? And so we haven't really seen any kind of map of the general circulation, I think that would be helpful. And as well, I wanted, still wanted to see the petition because it may have some information as well.
Can I ask one staff question? If we vote this down tonight and it goes to the Board of Alderman, does that also leave the developer an option to revise their sketch plan and come back before us with a revised option that could potentially get our blessing before, and then that gets sent to the Board of Alderman?
It would be at their discretion and the Alderman's discretion. A no vote would enable the Alderman to proceed with introduction of the board bill.
Have we had enough?
The only thing I ask you, if you would speak just a tad louder so we make sure everything's on.
I'm sorry, so the, the, let me restate the conditions that have been discussed, we don't.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Alderman Coen?
Can I make, can I make a recommendation that we just take each, like a quick vote on each of the conditions and vote separately? And vote separately up or down on either one of them.
I love that solution. Alright.
Pardon me, Chairman, I, I know people keep interrupting you, but there's, there's something that I want to provide some clarity on and maybe seek clarity on from our friends in the zoning administration. According to the code, when the development plan comes in front of the planning commission. You can only review it for compliance with the sketch plan. So anything that is not specifically in the sketch plan ordinance. There's not really any mechanism for the planning commission to control or provide input other than the goodwill of the developer to agree to certain things. So if there are specific things that you want included in the sketch plan, to be sure that they make it into the development plan, you have to be specific about that. Does that sound right, Mary, Evan?
That's correct.
Great. And then. Oh, and the, to the, the point about the clock that we, we, we passed the forty-five days after the submittal of the complete sketch plan application. So a board bill could be introduced and I just want to reiterate that in the code, if the planning commission does not make a recommendation tonight. If, or if there is no recommendation, the code assumes a positive recommendation.
Yes.
So just.
That's great.
Got to, should reach a decision today.
And I wasn't sure I fully understood the implications of what you were saying about what was of these conditions we discussed. I assume that applies to the additional detail on screening that applies to the. Visitability, interconnect, I, I'm not sure what you're saying we can't.
I, I was wary about the language that said, the condition says like something has to be present in the development, uh, plan. If it's not specific, it's, it's really pretty hairy.
So we can, but it may or may not pan out in the end.
I think a way to think about it, Mary James, Olivia, correct me if this is off, is. Even something that couldn't be clearly indicated in a drawing at this stage of development could be included in the ordinance. Language in the ordinance.
So that really means everything would be included. Alright, so I like Alderman Cohn's suggestion that we vote as a commission on each of these issues individually. So I'm going to start at the top.
Madam Chair, may I, sorry, may I ask one last question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, I was just wondering if the staff has done any evaluation on, on the feasibility? Of making a requirement of having the, the ones on Wilson, uh, face the street. Because generally I, I'd be in support of something like, that's, that should be the way it is, right? Uh, and if it's something that's feasible for the property to allow to do, I, I like it, uh, but I just don't want it to get in the way of the whole project. That's a concern of mine. Does the staff have any thoughts and evaluations on that?
Yeah, we, we discussed this concept several times with the applicant. Cause we similarly recommended it as a priority in our review. I think my understanding is there's the concern about the marketability, but also the challenge of maintaining the unit count. Without losing parking spaces, I think either units would be lost, which may break the economic feasibility. Or parking spaces would be lost, um, which may present its own challenges. That's my. The applicant, for those not in the room, is adding that the two access points. Is considered kind of important for the emergency access to the rear of the property. The fire department provides that review, but the emergency access could be for any vehicle.
So we'll go through one by one and you'll call the role for each?
Just as a point of clarification for the record, I'm not clear on what the action the commission is taking right now. Are you voting in favor of passing this plan with conditions? Are you discussing what conditions you would be in favor?
The latter, the latter. So what we want to do is go through and test the agreement on the five conditions that have been discussed. To see which ones we should then include in a motion.
With the. Vote, there may be five conditions or there may be three conditions.
Or none.
And would the commission be open to allowing the applicant to indicate whether from their perspective, they could achieve a condition before? The commission takes these kind of straw polls?
I would like to know.
Yeah, if they could do it.
If the applicant is agreeable or disagreeable with each amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
So test, I'm going to invite you to the stand so you can respond on the record.
Point of information while you're coming up, there is one condition that's already on there, street trees. We're okay with that one, right? Just so everybody's clear, or tree lawn, sorry.
And tree lawn, but the trees may, I'm doing it.
Tree lawn, but the trees may be set north of the sidewalk instead than the tree lawn itself.
Alright, this is to be the introduction to our straw poll of the, I'm not saying the commission's asking for all of these, but, but before we do. If you have all buildings on Wilson, but fronting Wilson, is that a?
That's a deal breaker for us.
Thank you. If you, at the next stage, needed to provide more information on visitability and interconnectivity within the development.
We could look at interior visibility, the wording of interconnected, yes.
Great. I'm going to consider the, the petition question to be something that the other, that some of the neighborhood residents will provide to us. Okay. Great. Excellent. Thank you. I'm going to say the traffic study, although it is not defined as to who is. We, we don't have a definition of who's actually conducting it and paying for it. It's a tough one.
We, we are of the mindset like, we will not change Hampton and Wilson. This project can't. The same with the feasibility of like yes or no, the traffic impact of fixing outer hill issues of enter and access into here. I just don't think it's in this project's purview to fix, but I do understand your point of alerting the traffic department and the Aldermen and of that. But it's just not, what, what's on that study isn't going to dictate us fixing Hampton.
Okay. Additional detail on screening and landscaping.
We can look at that. Yep.
Okay. And of course the tree lawn, which you've already.
We've already agreed to the tree lawn. Yep.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright.
Chairwoman?
Yes.
If I may, uh, I think for, again, for the record, it might be clearest if the commission, planning commission first takes up a motion. Uh, either to approve or deny the plan and then if the. Decision is to approve, then take up amendments to the plan for each of those conditions, just so it's.
But if we vote against it with other conditions.
Then you. Then you probably need an additional amendment.
Okay, alright. Okay, we're going to start with the really clean, right? We're going to start from really clean to more complex. So I need a motion, please.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with that approach.
I don't think, I, I think that you could move to put the item before us if there needs to be a vote. But otherwise, you can take up the, I don't agree with that approach.
Yeah, in our, in the planning commission's procedure, as we do this a little bit different from other boards where there's discussion prior to a motion rather than a discussion on the table. And David shared that as something that makes our kind of order a little unique.
Okay.
But that is the practice.
Okay. So with that in mind, you're still.
With that in mind, that, I think that's fine.
Are you okay with the straw polling on, okay, item by item?
Here we go.
Start with all, all buildings on Wilson, front Wilson, please. As to whether that will be included in our eventual motion.
Alderman Cohn?
No.
Alderwoman Sonier?
Could be basically something like that.
Do we have a pass option?
You couldn't mistake.
Okay, just, just, you can come back, just pass for a second.
Uh, Commissioner Bradley? Commissioner Fowler?
No.
Commissioner Garmendia?
No.
Commissioner Hubman?
No.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Chair Boaz?
No.
Commissioner Banton?
Yes.
That does not pass.
Well, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
The vote is that did not pass. Will you just repeat what it was you just voted on?
So the, the idea of all buildings that are on Wilson, fronting Wilson. Did not pass.
As a condition.
As a condition for the motion. Alright, the next one.
Very quick update, not to distract, but just. In response to the desire for it, we received the petition. I forwarded it all to all commissioners present just now, so you have it.
Alright, then the next one, at the next phase of develop, of review, that they provide additional information on visitability and interconnectivity within the development.
I move. Second, do you need a second?
We're just doing, okay. And she's going to do the role.
Alderman Cohn?
Sorry.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubman?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Alright, the next.
Well, that obviously passed, Tracy.
Yes.
Repeat what it is.
By your vote, you sustain a motion.
So by your, by your vote, you sustained containing in the motion that visitability and interconnectivity will be reviewed in more detail at the next phase of development.
Next phase of development, okay. Miriam, does that, that work?
Is that language okay? Okay. Um, I'm going to skip the difficult one and go to the next one. At the next phase of development, additional detail would be provided on screening and landscaping.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Yep.
Commissioner Hubman?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Right, at the next phase of development, that the, a tree lawn be maintained along Wilson Avenue.
Constructed.
Sorry, will be. Well.
It's not already there.
Will be included in the design.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubman?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Excellent. Alright, so we will require in the motion that a tree lawn on Wilson will be included in the design at the next phase of development. Alright, the last one is the traffic study. And I feel that that needs some discussion. I don't, are we asking that the developer pay for that? Are we saying that, I think we've all recognized that there's existing conditions that need to be addressed, that could be exacerbated by the development.
I mean, my thoughts are is that a traffic study would have been helpful to have to see if. What is proposed now is the appropriate in terms of ins and outs of the site as well as, you know. Traffic on Wilson one way or whatever, and requiring it at this point. I mean, we're already locking in the, the, the plan, so if they do a traffic study and suggest something else, then. I mean, what's that going to do?
Presumably they're going to recommend changes that could be made to address the existing problems and. I mean, we do traffic studies all the time, right?
Right, but what if they say, yeah, this shouldn't have two ins and outs so close to each other, or it only needs one, or it needs to have, you know, X, Y, and Z? That would go against what's being currently shown.
If, if I may. Seems to, seems to me that the issue is beyond this site, but it includes this site. So I would think it's up to the, kind of the neighborhood writ larger than this site to address the traffic study. Which I think would require the support of the Aldermen and maybe the city departments or whoever. I don't see how it's incumbent on the developer of this site to do the traffic study for the greater portion of the neighborhood. So I don't know what our ability is to make a recommendation to other city departments or, or what that might look like.
Is there a motion that looks like that the planning P D A?
I mean, my whole concern with it just is, is we heard there's this petition out there that's against it because of traffic at Hampton and, and Wilson, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there are other ways to get out of there, but we don't know because nobody did the diligence to discuss that, right? And then the other part of it is, is if they all do go to Hampton and Wilson, the question becomes, well, what do we as a city, the Alder, whoever have to do to accommodate this going forward? Assuming we're doing it, so again, I, I don't know that it's incumbent on them to do it at this point because I don't know what it's going to really prove for us. I mean, we're kind of getting out in front of it already.
Yeah, it seems like we're, we're trying to address a separate problem that's already a known problem.
Correct.
But it's in the, you know, the proximity of this project.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, so the new use is coming up. This is a new use. It's incumbent upon the city and the planning commission to assess what impact this new use is going to have. It's not upon the developer, it's upon the city. I mean, so we can ask for circulation plan. And review the circulation plan. And, you know, the whole thing about two entrances, I think they're too close together. I just think that's problematic. And I understand why they want to, because it is a tight site. But we have an obligation to the other people in the community that if we know this is going to make it worse. We, we ought to have a, at least some kind of strategy. Maybe there's a circulation workout that we can come up with. But I just don't think we should go forward without having at least that information. We don't even have a circulation plan. In front of us. I mean, we know there's an occupied block, people on Barre Court live right next to that, so. I think we have an obligation for them to, to look at that and to have an understanding of the impact of adding a hundred cars in this location.
We need help from staff.
So the in, in, impact is. On volume of traffic coming off the site onto Wilson. There's the opportunity to say that that's two ways to doing that, to allow the emergency access. And then getting to Wilson to Hampton. I live on the other side of Hampton and come to Wilson at Hampton. And you, the, the, let's just say the singleization is not very favorable at, right now, for those that are getting backed up in Wilson. That might be what part of the traffic study is to say, the singleization gets a rebias towards letting people go from Wilson more often. But, yeah, that would not be something that the planning department.
The number of vehicles on Wilson on this site doesn't bother me much, simply because, you know, if you've got. How many people are there that are working, they're actually going to an office every day? Maybe you've got, say you have a hundred of the cars turning over once or twice a day. P M peak, when they're all coming home kind of around the same time, you might have a hundred cars in an hour entering that. Which is a little more than one a minute. It's, I mean, you know, it's, it's not a huge impact. It is an incremental impact, but it's not a, a game changer. I, I can't fathom. A restaurant or something like that where you're turning over lots of vehicles every forty-five minutes, every hour and a half, that tends to have a much bigger impact.
Paul, would you mind mentioning what your day job is?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out. Uh, I work in the. I work in the transportation planning department at East West Gateway.
I mean, at this point, it seems that a traffic study would not be of any help at this point, and if that's a concern, then should just vote no on the overall plan because we don't have that data.
Well, yeah, cuz my, I would be curious about the timing of a traffic study, whenever I seen them, they take a long time before they can get done, and so I, I would just, that timeline to me wouldn't make sense with us voting this out today and sending it to the board alderman.
I mean, I would recommend, I mean, I think this is something, I've seen aldermen request of EPS and perhaps they funded out of work capital, I'm not quite sure, haven't been able to do the research, but I, I think it's in, you know, this is something the alderman for the ward can help with. And he did express support for this project, so he is invested in it succeeding and not failing because traffics, traffic, uh, traffic patterns cannot be solved, so I think I'm comfortable with not including that as a condition, but just working through other means to make sure a traffic study occurs at some point before this project goes live, cuz it's not like this is gonna be built tomorrow. So I do think there's time for a traffic study to be done and for the traffic, you know, the improvements to be made in the traffic signal timing, and that sort of thing before the project is occupied.
Yeah, it seems like there's a clear issue. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if Mr. Bradley could weigh in on the timeline for a request of a traffic study.
So as Commissioner Garmendia talked about typically, an alder would request that from BPS and fund it through war capital account. You could be talking by the time we use our on-call traffic consultant to do it, hundred and twenty days.
Wow, that's great.
Something like that, six months.
Right, but that, which is what, as an alder, that's the timeline I'm pretty familiar with, so that's my concern is if we attach this to this legislation, but we're voting this out and saying they're gonna do it, even if he requested, and that's if he requested, because obviously he hasn't requested it at this point, and I, you know, so the fact that he hasn't requested at this point, so he would have to request it after this, and it's a six-month timeline, but we're talking about passing the legislation through, I just don't know that that, I don't know if that makes sense, I don't know how that impacts the developer's timeline, I just, that that doesn't seem compatible to me.
Yeah, I, this isn't really the developers' issue, and so I don't, I don't think that this is something that we should be putting on them. You know, and a traffic study as well, there's so many variables, you know, I mean, not the least of which is there's two motels right next door to this, so the occupancy for those can vary from week to week, or even day to day, if there's a convention that comes to town and you've got a hundred-room motel next door to you, that's obviously going to impact, you know, the traffic that's on that block. So, you know, I, I don't see the benefit of the, the traffic study in and of itself. I, I don't think that it's going to solve any of the problems or even suggest a solution to the problem. You know, the fact is, there's two motels right next door, you know, that are going to potentially, you know, create traffic issues from time to time anyway. There's also signaled intersections at Elizabeth and Columbia just to the south of this, you know, so yeah, Wilson, you know, gets busy from time to time, drive a block south and go to the signal there.
I, I agree with Alderman Cone, and I would also just ask us to take note of what Commissioner Hubman said, I thought that was very wise. And I, I would suggest that maybe at this point, we discussed it for a while, if somebody wants to make a motion that's thawed out and, and has a detail of what should happen with it, they can do so, and if not, perhaps we can leave this to the alderman. If he wants to have traffic study going on at the same time as this, he can make that happen, I would think. And if not, the project can move forward either way.
I would draw my concern about a traffic study and leave it to you, Alderman, to work out with BPS.
Anyone wanna?
Can I?
I've handed my notes to my neighbor, hoping he should generate us.
Well, and real quick, I'm losing my words, quickly, can I suggest that whatever the motion is, there's some allowance for staff to work on kind of making sure that the language can be like effectively like put into the ordinance so that it is actually something that's like reviewable at the next stage?
Is there any chance, Miriam, you could make, you can make the suggested motion, and then someone could say, so moved?
Oh, that's a big.
And I just have, I hate to do this, I have one quick question. When would these hit the market? What's your basic, what's your expected schedule? Occupancy, you know, people moving in a year, so there's some time to a hundred and three months for a traffic study and then some strategy on seems like it could work.
And we can encourage the alderman that if neighborhood has concerns and he would like to receive a traffic study, it is up to him to initiate it with BPS.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
Fuck, man.
Let me try. So I heard the three motions or conditions gained support were relating to visitability, the tree lawn, which we already have language drafted for, thanks, James, and the screening and landscaping at the eastern border of the property? So and interconnectivity, okay. So how about for visibility and interconnectivity that the development incorporate a clear plan for consistent consistent accessible or access Commissioner Fowler, do you have any thoughts on this? Consistent accessibility from all units to to amenities onsite. So that to amenities onsite and the right-of-way, so that the development include a plan for consistent accessibility from each unit to all amenities onsite and the right-of-way. So visibility, that, that could be that one, and then screening and landscaping would be that the development include ample screening and landscaping, skip the ample, screening and landscaping at the eastern edge of the property sufficient to or maybe it is just left there, screening and landscaping at the eastern edge of the property.
Tomoot, I can't hear, so if anyone in the room.
Second.
All right, we have a second from Alderwoman Sonier. Call for votes.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubman?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Nay.
The motion passes.
I've really struggled with the traffic issue, and it's, I think it is clear that it's your alderman, it's, it's not really our purview. We support you with your alderman, though. Yep.
He's, he told us, he asked for it, but the thing, cuz I said that in my open statement for the first time, that he asked for it, and who's ever in charge, we told him no because there was no reason to do it.
We do have significant number of people on this commission that I think can help communicate those issues.
I think that's part of the struggle is that those things are paid for out of war capital, and war capital is purely up to the alder, so I don't think that this body, this commission has the authority or jurisdiction to mandate a stipulation that we don't find, I think that's why it has to be your alder who makes the request, because they have to authorize the war capital spending.
In all due respect, it's been granted, granted the study, when he asked for it, this would not have been an issue here, so my question is, and I'm gonna talk to Matt, Mr. Devoted, whatever, older devoted tomorrow and say, who told you no?
Yeah, and I think even if he's been told no, now we've had this discussion on the record as a planning commission, Mr. Bradley himself has said that it's a possibility.
Chair Owen Boles, may I suggest that the public hearing section of this meeting is, is over and that additional hearings perhaps will happen, I don't know, with the Board of Aldermen?
Remember the action that we just took? Gets forwarded to the Board of Aldermen, they can proceed, or they can stop, but it's now in their court.
I, I understand, and I appreciate that, I just
Okay.
Even if we said flat out no, it would be in their court.
Yes, but the, but the, but the level's called a pass. In the higher level.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right.
Jonathan, you have
Two and a half.
That's two minutes more than I need. Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, commissioners, I am Jonathan Roper with the Planning Urban Design Agency. Tonight, we have two items on the agenda, and then one will just pass for another time, and we'll do a quick update on that. Both of these are requests to, for permission to hold public hearings, this would be for Plan Area One, the Ville, Greater Ville, Kingsway East, we'll go through that one first, and then also number two. Throughout this process, we have followed the minimum standards for engagement, where we have, there's several parameters or procedures that we're supposed to updo during this neighborhood planning process, including community engagement, topical coverage, which the plans cover, the general requirements, which are basically just the boundary requirements, and local and regional implementation and coordination with other plans that are adopted, such as the sloop and other plans as is that, so at this point, the plans are being drafted, so we're on some early drafts at this point, and looking for just approval for the planning commission to hold a public hearing and plan adoption at a future commission meeting for Plan Area One, we are gonna take these both separately for Plan Areas One and Two, just because we have, just to make it easier for historical records.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubman?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Chair Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner, and the second item is the same request, but it's for Plan Areas Two, that's the Walnut Park, Mark Twain neighborhoods, and this is to, we also find that the planning process has met the minimum requirements of plan adoption, and we're seeking to hold a public hearing at a future planning commission date.
Thank you.
Previous roll.
Any objections? Previous roll?
Hearing none. Motion passes.
Given the last item we have, it was just more of a discussion update that will, you have the resolution before you, we drafted updates to our minimum standards for plan adoption, so we could discuss that at a future date, thank you.
Thank you.
Clock today. Miriam, step. I believe there's two slides I'm supposed to be using.
Sorry, we're gonna do this, are you ready?
Oh, okay, do this.
Oh, no, we're zipping through, cuz the next item, unless you're gonna introduce this guy here, but
Oh, he's in your step.
Okay, so also, we have expanded our PDA family, Wes Wright is here, it's his second week here, he's a neighborhood planner, planner, and you wanna just quick, hello?
Yeah, quickly, I grew up in Shore, Missouri, about an hour northwest of here, joined the Marines after high school, always wanted to come back to St. Louis, and yeah, thirty-five years old now, and very proud and honored to serve the city and its residents, so. And, and thank you guys for your service, too.
Very happy to have Wes.
Are you regretting, are you regretting this yet?
You read the crowd well. Yeah.
Next slide. That's exciting stuff, yep, the Z public open house is, is going, we're doing great community engagement. We have virtual code compact meeting, that all went well, you know that's how, how we roll with our public engagement, so that's going great. Is there one more slide? Delegated items, great, we delegated, we took care of them, the last thing I wanna make a reminder of, cuz we did it tonight, we now have adopted the sloop as a component of the comprehensive plan for, for the city of St. Louis under Missouri law. We've now also adopted the sustainability plan as a portion of the comprehensive plan under state law, and just tonight, by your vote on the transit and mobility plan, we've adopted that as a component of the city's comprehensive plan, so three cheers.
Huge congratulations to staff for the yeoman's effort that this has all taken to make happen, so thank you guys all.
Yeah. Is this the longest commission meeting in recorded history here?
Hell, no.
Move to adjourn. Get out of here, so.